We will call the Capitol City Council meeting for Thursday, October 11th to orders. Sue, can we please begin with a roll call?
Councilmember Norton.
Here.
Councilmember Tran.
Here.
Councilmember Termini.
Here.
Mayor Botor.
Here. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Uh-oh.
Can we face the back of the room for the Pledge of Allegiance?
How do I know that happened?
Easily. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I like this. It looks good. Have a presentation from our police chief. Welcome.
You look a little relaxed.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Rudy Escalante with the Police Department. This is a great time because I get to introduce to you two of our newest officers. Where, there they are. On my right, your left, is Mr. Scott Newton, and he was sworn in yesterday, August, October 12th. He is a local resident in some respects, but he was born and raised in Stockton. He spent a majority of his summers here in Capitola. He's a, has a bachelor's degree in political science from Santa Clara University. He completed the South Bay Police Academy in December of 2015. He's in the middle of his orientation week, and he'll be out in the training program here in the coming days. He lives in Aptos and enjoys outdoor beach activities, so he fits in well here. And so I want to welcome Scott to our family and to the force. Welcome, Scott.
Welcome, Scott.
Our other newest addition is Officer Aaron Qualis. How's it going, Aaron? He was sworn in as a new officer just last week, and he completed the Police Academy, which is six months long. And for both of them, that's quite an endeavor. It's, used to be 12 weeks, and now it's 26 weeks. So, a lot of hard work is put into that. Aaron was born and raised in Santa Cruz, and he graduated from Silkell High and currently attending Cabrillo College. He's also in the field training program. He lives in Live Oak, and his hobbies are playing hockey. He's a great hockey player, as a matter of fact. And spending time with his family is also local as well, so it's good to have both Aaron and Scott aboard. Congratulations, gentlemen. Thank you.
Chief, you don't want to embarrass them and have them come to the microphone and talk to us?
Yeah.
These opportunities don't come along all the time. They're not moving, chief.
As Chief Escalante said, I was born and raised in Stockton, California. It's a pleasure to be in front of you this evening. Pleasure meeting you all. I'm sure I'll be running into you at different times in my training. Just want to say I'm fortunate for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
To back off that, I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity. I'm looking forward to starting a career here. It's gonna be a lot of fun getting to know all of you guys, seeing you around the city. It's a great place, and I'm looking forward to working with you guys.
Thanks, Aaron. Capitola needs young people. Thank you for coming to our department. I want to thank all your fellow officers for coming and supporting you tonight. I love the camaraderie. Thank you. Okay, with that, we have a report on closed session?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Botor, members of the City Council. There was one item on this evening's closed session agenda. That was a performance evaluation for the city manager position, and there was no reportable action.
Thank you. Sue, any additional materials?
Yes, we received 10 additional materials regarding item 9B, the zoning code update. Thank you.
This is the part of the meeting where we have public comments. This is a time when speakers are allowed three minutes to talk on any item that is not on the agenda. So if you want to come to the podium and tell us your name, we'd be happy to hear from you. Hi, Kathleen.
Hi. Thank you for your time. Kathleen Atchison, representing Friends of the Capitola Branch Library, inviting the community to come to a meeting Tuesday, November 1st, at 7:00 PM at the Capitola Branch. This is a meeting that is a series of, one of a series of community meetings being held for the Public Library Strategic Plan Update. This is particularly important for Capitola as we enter into the design process for our new branch library. It's an opportunity to shape the future of the library, so we invite you to attend. Whether or not you are a regular library user, come and bring a friend. More information on the city web. Thank you.
Thanks for your enthusiasm, Kathleen. Anyone else like to speak?
Mayor, Councilman Gary Richard Arnold. We saw recently in WikiLeaks that Hillary Clinton, to the private banks, called for an international union, a North American union, in fact. This comes directly from a blueprint for American dictatorship called Philip Drew Administrator. On page 291, he says he had in mind an amalgamation of Mexico and the Central American republics into one government. "Our Constitution is obsolete and even grotesque, obliterating state lines and molding the country into a homogeneous nation. The national government is to take itself some of the functions that were exclusively the state's jurisdiction." And they advocate a president for 10 years to be totally ceremonial. It's, they talk about duties now done by local and national governments can now effectively be carried out only by international authority. The members are from AMBAG. AMBAG is exactly this conspiracy that's going on right now. They have contracts with Italy, which is a front for the United Nations and the World Bank, that in fact is a violation of the Logan Act. The Brown Act itself says the people insist on remaining informed so that they may retain control over instruments which they've created. None of your reports to your fellow councilmen or to the people out here have any idea that you have stakeholders and you have PG&E with contracts with the World Bank and the United Nations and that they're losing their authority. This is a deliberate plan, and it's reinforced through California Forward, Bruce McPherson, who's the chairman of AMBAG and of the Board of Supervisors, worked for common cause. Those huge tax attempt foundations, Hawes, Packard, Irvine, Commonwealth. I gave you a little tiny orphan Annie cartoon here, and I'll just read three of the frames in here, and it's simple to understand. Daddy Warbucks got drugged, and little orphan Annie's concerned. And he says, "Annie, the Pan Continental Alliance," and she says, oh, he says, "A group consisting of the powerful international bankers and multinational conglomerates ostensibly to improve trade and economic growth." She says, "Well, isn't that good?" It would be true if that was her actual purpose. Her purpose is to control the economy of the free world and feed their insatiable greed. And then she says, "Well, can't the government stop it?" Oh, yes, but they have a plan. Their own men to be elected as leaders of those countries, premiers, ministers, and presidents. That's what's happening here, and it's obvious. And if anybody took the time, we have three newspapers that are run, that were purchased by Bill Gates, Bilderberger, the San Jose Mercury, the Santa Cruz Sentinel, and the Monterey Herald. I hope people will check their Google and get a hold of the string of this deceit that's being perpetrated by the person that's not reporting back from AMBAG and by the powers that be. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Marilyn.
Hello. I want a copy of that cartoon, Gary, because I think it depicts what we're facing here is that we're living in a society where corporate power is overpowering democracy, and it means what you're able to do for community is very little. And of course, I'm very much focused on the telecom tower tsunami that's in process and the increased radiation that is damaging all life on Earth. Another recent, anyway, I'm just thinking of all these cell towers, and now Verizon's going in the public right of way. They're going in neighborhoods with the radiation emitting antennas that cause cancer, devalue property, and violate our rights. This is an article that was in the Monterey Herald, and it's dated September 30th, by Nina Beatty. Monterey Cell Tower Onslaught Fraught With Risk. And I am sharing this because it applies here to Santa Cruz County. And I, for instance, I was at the Santa Cruz City Council meeting and city planning meeting where they approved six of these Verizon cell sites in the public right of way that belongs to the public. The planner, Mike Ferry, read from the report from Verizon where they anticipate 22 more applications in the city of Santa Cruz for just this fall, and another 74 to the city in the next two years. So she starts out, and I'll leave you copies, that cell tower tsunami is about to hit our community, affecting businesses, wildlife, humans, wildlife, and trees. The Federal Communications Commission is pushing new cell towers, called small cells, into the public right of way in preparation for 5G. And you were each given a copy of the Tom Wheeler talk on 5G with comments on the health implications and the fact that there's no liability insurance for any of this injury from radio frequency microwaves. It says, "Chair continuing, Tom Wheeler probably calls it infrastructure intensive, requiring a massive deployment of small cells. This is not for phone coverage. It is for future technology uses and faster streaming video." These pulse-modulated microwave transmitters will be located on sidewalks and in front yards, outside front doors, and bedroom windows throughout our community.
Marilyn, you're gonna need to wrap up. Okay.
I'll give this to you. We really need to put a stop to this. It's a health hazard, violation of our rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else we'd like to address the council tonight? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment, move on to City Council comments.
No comment.
No comment?
Yes. I have a few.
Go ahead.
First of all, on November 5th and 6th, we'll be holding the Second Annual Capitola Planar Event, where we invite 40 artists from around the state and some from outside the state to picturesque places, and there are plenty of them in Capitola, and do some art in, out in the air, plein air. It's a great event. The artists will be painting the entire day on the 5th, and on the 6th, which is Sunday, from 11 to 4, we'll be having a reception at the New Brighton Multi-Use Building, the Performing Arts Center. The artists will be showing what they painted during their one day out in our town, and you'll be, have an opportunity to purchase paintings from the artists. This year, the artists are donating a portion of their sales to the Capitola Art Fund, the planner event in particular, and they will use those funds for Spectra and many other county programs to promote art. I'd like to thank, if I could thank our sponsors.
Sure.
Gail's Bakery, Len's Arts, Palace Arts, San Lorenzo Floors, and Shadowbrook Restaurant are all contributing sponsors to this event, and they make it all possible, and we're looking forward to it.
Great.
Secondly, the Art and Cultural Commission has a call to artists going out for the design of the new railing in front of Belaroma and Sam's office. It's, it'll be a great, a nice piece of art. It'll also stop people from falling off the sidewalk there, and we're happy about that. We will also be sending out a call to artists shortly for a new mural, and it'll be brought to the council, obviously, a new mural for the concrete facade of our new skateboard park on McGregor. And we're reaching out to artists that have a connection to the skating community, and I think it'll be an interesting project and it'll be beautiful. And lastly, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to embarrass you by thanking you for attending the long, tedious FAA meetings to help quiet our skies. As some people may or may not know, you know, in addition to the 10 or 20 hours a week that a normal city council person or an abnormal city council person would put into the job, this adds another 10 hours to your week, in addition to the extra 10 hours you probably put in just being mayor. So, thank you. And you drove to Palo Alto today to sit through that scintillating meeting. Thank you for helping us quiet the skies.
Thank you. I'll give a little short report on that at the end. Jacques, do you have a comment?
I'd just like Mike to comment a little bit more about the plein air. So I understood that the first one we had, it was pretty much open, but now we've gone to a higher level.
Well, no, it's all pretty much open, and-
I heard we were gonna have some peer review, or we're gonna have some sort of-
Well, we do, we, for the professional division, we do review the applicants.
Okay.
And they are accomplished artists. We also have some amateurs that take place, that come out and paint. So it's a good time for all. It's, the quality of the art, believe me, was not lacking last year, evidenced by the two, the first and second place winners that hang on the wall back there. And we'll be rotating our art probably in the next month. Roy Segura from New Brighton Middle School is gonna collect some student art and bring it to us, and we'll be installing that in the next couple of weeks.
So, Mike, I don't know if you forgot about it or left it up to me, but Mike and I participated in a interview process on Tuesday, and I have to hand it to our city manager for putting together excellent review groups. There was three review groups, and I think Jamie will talk about that a little bit. But the main thing I want to focus about is the applicants were wonderful, and any single one of them would be a great police chief for here, and I think Mike would agree with that. And so we're waiting to see how the process works out, and if you're gonna talk about it more, maybe you could elusive. And I do have a question for Steve when he comes up.
Okay, great. Just real quick on the committee for South Bay arrivals. This committee's been meeting for about nine months now. We've completed the public testimony from the public. We've completed the information from the FAA, and we had our last informational meeting to come up with a consensus today. The consensus document will be presented. Our charge from the three congressmen was to come up with a consensus, and that consensus document will be made available at the meeting on October 27th, where the public will get its last chance to weigh in on those recommendations. Following the public input, the committee will reconvene and come up with its final consensus on what they want to propose to the three congress members that will then take that and present it to the FAA officially to try to bring some quiet skies back to Santa Cruz County. So we'll keep you posted on that. Treasure comments?
No comment.
Okay. Staff comments?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, very quickly, I was gonna, Kathleen Atchison stole my thunder a little bit, but I just wanted to put in another pitch for the library strategic planning process. This is something we've been working with, with the new library director who wants to really kind of focus on the role of each branch within the larger organization, the regional library system. And it is Tuesday, November 1st, as Kathleen said, 7:00 PM at Capitola Library, so the whole public is welcome, and it's a great opportunity to participate. And I will just reiterate what Councilmember Jacques, that we had a great panel, a great panelist, community engagement in the, in the police chief selection process. The next step is gonna be backgrounding for the finalists, and we do expect an announcement coming up. It'll be several weeks out before we're ready to make an announcement, but it's been a great process, and we really thank council members for their participation.
Thank you. Kathleen, good for you. It's not often we get to upstage the city manager, so. Steve?
I just want to make sure everybody is aware that there's a storm coming in tomorrow sometime. Depending which forecast and prediction you want to read, you will either have a half-inch rain or 10 inches of rain up in the mountains. So we're, Public Works is prepared. We've notched the creek. We're prepared to open it. We've got all the crew on standby. All the storm drains have been cleaned, so we're ready, and we'll be here to protect the city.
As they always are.
Yes.
You know, it's a good excuse to have a party, Steve. We should, on an annual basis, when we open the lagoon up, call for a community party on the beach at the, at the opening of the lagoon. You know who does come down there is all the guys with their skimboards, the kids, because they ride that trough into the ocean on a regular basis. If nobody's ever seen that, come down and see it. It's quite a feat.
In my 15 years here, I think at least 10 of it have been the wee hours of the morning and it's raining.
I'll still be down there, if I knew when.
It's well attended by the seagulls. Okay. Jacques, your question?
Yeah, well, it's a question, then a little comment about the breaching of the, the bridge, excuse me, the creek. So I'm sitting down in Zelda's, and a bunch of guys are sitting around watching the process happen, right? And I get these comments, "That's not the way to do it. There's a better way to do it." You know, they're sort of commenting about how the, the sand was being pushed around.
Surprised that they're-
Yeah, I thought it was pretty interesting. So, you know, as you know, I live on Monterey Avenue, and we've been waiting for resurfacing for some time. So a neighbor comes up to me, and he said, "What's going on with the creek outs, I mean, with the, the road outside?" And as we go out there, and sure enough, there's a bunch of people digging holes in the street, right? And so we had expected the whole road to be surfaced, but they're patching what appears to be little holes and stuff like that.
We're just doing little holes.
So, can you explain what's going on for my neighbors on Monterey?
So it's, it's very much an iterative process. We are doing a pavement recycling project where we're actually grinding up the pavement that they're putting it through a mixer that's on the back of a truck, and then putting it back down. To do that, they need to figure out what oils and amendments to add to the existing asphalt to, when they put it back down, it's a good new asphalt. And then we'll get a regular overlay on top of that. So what they did, and this was probably, I want to say, three weeks ago, they went out and they sampled every, I believe, 100 feet or so, and took that back to the lab and figured out what, what the constituents of that road there, so they can figure out what they need to add to it. So it was, they, it's not a straight, we're just buying asphalt out of the, out of the plant. We're actually making new asphalt out there, and they need to know what they needed to add into it. And since that time, they've been, we, they have to finish all the concrete ramps that they need to repair. They're gonna do a retaining wall on Park Avenue through the Equiptyr Scope. All that needs to get done so that when we do the final paving, they're paving up to the new structure. So we hope the wall can start next week, and then there'll be paving soon thereafter.
Okay, thanks. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for that report, Steve. Okay, this brings us to the consent calendar. These are items that we normally deal with all in one action. Is there anyone wants to pull anything from the consent calendar? I'll move consent. Move. Is there a second?
Second.
Moves in a second. Anybody from the public like to pull anything from the consent calendar? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll bring us to a, I'll tease back, general government hearing. This is Consider Options for Paving Repairs Along Stockton Avenue Near the Espinade. Steve?
Anything else you have? The item before you is some pavement repairs in Stockton Avenue from basically Stockton Avenue Bridge to Capitola Avenue. It's where we recently completed some pedestrian improvements and sidewalk reconstruction. And when we were done with that project, I think there was a consensus that it'd be nice to redo the road at that point. We've talked with both the contractor who did the work and the contractor doing the paving work on Park Avenue and got quotes from them. We really went after a two-inch overlay to compare prices. The low price there was $68,125, and that was from Anderson Pacific, who did the work up at Stockton Avenue Bridge. I know it's probably a little more than we all anticipated it would cost, and so we've tried to come up with another alternative, which would be to go out and patch some of the asphalt where it's cracking worse and putting a slurry seal over it. Problem with the slurry seal in general is in time, especially with the traffic you have on that road, whatever's underneath is gonna start showing pretty quickly. I just have a quick series of pictures here. I want to kind of show you the condition of it. There's a new feature here. Let's see if I can get it to work. No. All right. Anyway, you can see the cracking here is in the pavement that's right by the abutment up to the Stockton Avenue Bridge. That's something certainly you couldn't slurry seal over. It'd show up that, later that afternoon if we were to try that. Looking back toward Capitola Avenue here, you can see the crosswalk that was taken out, and obviously, it kind of looks patchwork-y. There's no doubt about it. And we could, again, do some more grinding there and then slurry seal that, but if you start looking at it in a little more detail, you see there's quite a bit of cracking in the sidewalk, in the crosswalk itself, that would, slurry seal wouldn't take care of. So, you know, we could patch that and then slurry seal, but I think I've got one more set of pictures. This is down by David Ling. You can see there's additional cracking here. All that would need to be repaired before we did a slurry seal. So, back to our recommendation. My recommendation is we do the two-inch overlay strictly based on the amount of cracking we see from one end of the road to the other.
Question, Mike?
So this is gonna go from Wharf Road intersection to the Stockton-Cap Ave intersection, two-inch overlay?
No, it's just from the bridge, Stockton Avenue Bridge on front of Margaritaville or Paradise.
Stock, what used to be Stockton?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
To Capitola Avenue. It's not gonna go on the other side of the bridge.
Is there a possibility of getting some kind of, you know, check number, peer review, maybe from Granite Rock that's doing Park Avenue right now?
That's who, they, they provide the second bid.
Oh, you just said that you got it from Anderson Pacific?
Anderson Pacific provided one bid, and Granite Rock provided the other bid.
And we're looking at the Granite Rock number?
We are looking at the Anderson Pacific number. Granite Rock was, I believe-
Out of control?
Was higher. Was $78,000.
$100,000.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And just follow up, Ben, how far in on the Espinade will that go with the paving?
Probably just to the crosswalk there.
To the crosswalk, okay. Dennis?
The most visible, most well-traveled intersection in the whole city of Capitola. There's no, nobody can question the need to do this. One, with a two-inch overlay, Steve, can, will they cover up the old markings? Will they bleed back up through once?
No, they will not bleed up through the, yeah, yeah.
I'll move in favor of this.
Second, public hearing? Motion in a second. Now, if anyone from the public would like to weigh in on the disposition of this intersection. Okay, we'll bring it back. Any other comments? Motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's do it.
Thank you very much, council.
Steve, nice of getting this back to us so quickly.
Yeah. Steve, any idea when they would be able to perform?
I'm hoping within the next three weeks. They, they are also potentially working on a sidewalk project in town, and they may, they may double team that, so we'll coordinate that with them.
Thank you for that. I have no idea. Okay, that brings us to zoning code update. Changing of the guard here a little bit. Give a general disclaimer to those remaining in the audience. The way we've been doing the zoning ordinance is barring stopping at any time during the discussion. If we're on any topic that matters to you, just raise your hand, and we'll immediately bring you up to the podium to talk about it. Okay? Thanks. Go ahead, Katie.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Before you tonight is another special meeting for, I guess, a regular meeting, for the zoning code update. This evening, we're gonna start off with a quick overview of the Coastal Commission minor edits that we provided as Attachment 3. Then we'll go into three discussion points that were asked to be brought back to the city council, and following that will lead into where we left off within Part 3 of the zoning code update. So-
Could you give me a page that we're gonna start on?
Well, within the packet, Agenda, Agenda Packet Online, we will start off, it starts on page 31, and it was the remainder of the packet. What we did is-
This packet?
Yes, your paper packet. We had sent the draft zoning code to the Coastal Commission, and what we received back was a lot of edits and also larger policy discussion items. And what, we took the, the comments that the Coastal Commission gave us, and we inserted into this document here, the, these edits, only the minor edits that don't have a fundamental impact on the zoning code update. So really where they wanted us to reference the coastal chapters and make more references throughout, or where they caught maybe a minor typo within the document.
Do you happen to have another copy of that?
I do.
Jacques, are you, oh, he's got it. Okay, nevermind. He's got it. Just want to make sure everybody's got it.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Sorry for that.
So, so we incorporated the minor edits provided by the Coastal Commission, and the larger policy issues will, once we submit the update to the Coastal Commission, we expect that we'll get a lot of the larger policy discussions that, items that they had edited in the first version for us. Those will likely come back to us, but at this juncture, we want to submit to the Coastal Commission, when it's time, a document that reflects exactly what our community would like. And we'll wait for those policy comments to come back and discuss those with you further when they do.
So, what's the expectation in return around hearing back from them, just average?
So, I think on a typical LCP update, their timeline is six months. Their routine, though, is within that time to grant themselves a one-year extension.
Okay. So, it's not a quick process?
No.
No, particularly for, you know, a comprehensive LCP update, you know, I think this one will take some time.
Sure, thanks. Okay, go ahead.
So, this evening, I was just hoping to get direction from the City Council that we can make, that we can move forward with the minor edits that we provided. And we'll incorporate those into the City Council updates. I wasn't going to go through chapter by chapter. It's really...
Okay, so in this document, it starts on page 31. Those comments go to page?
143.
So, you're looking for approval of the entire document?
Just the, yes.
The changes. You're looking to see if there's any problems with any of the changes on the entire document?
For those edits.
Just the red?
Just the red lines, yes. And then we will take this and we'll incorporate all of your edits that you've given us for these chapters in with these edits. But these are just the edits that the Coastal Commission provided that are not policy-related and will not have an impact on the fundamental products that we've been working with you on.
Okay. And did the Planning Commission already review this and approve this?
They reviewed the Coastal Commission chapters and they did not want to move forward. We didn't provide them with these edits as we're proposing for you. We thought this would be, when we first took them to Planning Commission, they asked that we not move forward with, that we send in the chapters as they were drafted, because they didn't want to, they wanted our, you know, the reflection of what the city wants to go to the Coastal Commission first and get their edits to come back officially. It was our, in reviewing that, we said, "We should at least give our, put our best foot forward and bring to the City Council those edits that we think are nonsubstantial and won't have an impact on the draft."
So, it's your opinion that the changes made here are nonsubstantial and...
Mm-hmm, yeah. And just to show them that we did put forth an edit, an effort to make, adopt their minor edits, and then we'll get into the policy discussions later.
Are there any specific questions in this document?
So, are we, are we moving up to 39 is the last page of those edits? Is that correct?
No, 143.
143.
The entire document?
Uh...
From 31 to 143.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I feel pretty strongly that, especially after a couple of years of missteps, not intentional, but certainly misunderstood by the public from this council, that we can't afford to move anything forward until the Planning Commission and the council both are in lock step. So, I would recommend, and I see the edits that you're speaking of, and they are purely administrative, you know, language, nothing to do with anything changing the zoning or the height or the things we look concerned with. But how this will read is council pushes the LCP forward without Planning Commission approval and moves it to the Coastal Commission. I don't want to see that headline. I don't want anybody to even think about, "That's our intent," even though our intent is not that. And this is a very benign proposal. I still would have to come out against it. It's just ill-advised right now.
Doc?
We just received an email from Molly Orning talking about how we should take our time on this because of the impact on the city. So, I agree with Mike.
Dennis, comment?
No, but we're getting very good at this. We want, I'm not moving things forward. In fact, we've become, we were sure when we started in the process with this that there was plenty of time to do that. Planning Commission insists on having a number of meetings, which pushed this thing four months later than it was supposed to be completed. Now, I'm not mocking their work. They did a great job on doing this. But it's also puts us in a position where you no longer can complete under the current administrations, go to a new administration. So, if you're going to push it that far, you might, we might as well say we don't go any farther with this document until the new council is seated. We should not be doing anything then if that's the case.
And even, and agreed, that nothing I've read in here makes me think that it, you know, in particular, can change anything, but that's not the perception. And, you know, all of us who take all the courses in, you know, public governance, we speak of following the law, but also adhering to the public perception. And the perception will be that this is a rush along, even though we know it's not. This is not the zoning code that we're talking about. It's language that will be a year from being reviewed again, but it's still another push through. If the Planning Commission isn't there with us, I'm not ready to move it along.
Let me, let's go ahead and stop there for a second. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public. Anybody from the public want to weigh in on the advancement of this document? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. I tend to agree with the point Mike made. It's a little confusing. I know that our regular process is, whatever we review has already been reviewed by the Planning Commission, and I understand this isn't administrative and maybe that's not necessary. But the key word that Mike said, and that's, it's just not about what the facts are, it's what the perception is. And I think because of that, I'm willing, kind of leaning that way, unless you feel like there's something that's on the tip of your tongue you want to add, so...
So, I just do want to clarify. They did review all the Coastal Commission requested edits, of which there were some real substantial policy issues that we discussed at previous meeting regarding managed retreat, expanded setbacks from wetlands and the ocean that would, you know, vacate large swaths of the city. None of that is in here. When we discussed it with the Planning Commission, I think they were very frustrated with some of the Coastal Commission comments, and they kind of threw up their arms and said, "We're not going to make any changes that they want until they come around on these big policy issues." And I'm paraphrasing very loosely.
Sure.
From staff's perspective, I think making those changes that really don't have a substantial effect on our zoning code, which are informational clarity, it at least shows a good faith effort that we're trying to work with them on the things that we can reach agreement. So, it'd be our recommendation to accept those changes that we think are acceptable. The Planning Commission will see these again. You know, they'll have an opportunity to object should they not like some of the wording. But all that said, it's your decision and staff will take direction.
Yeah, as I, as I look through the document, I mean, I see, you know, a lot of small, you know, corrections, but I also see some substantial, you know, red lines in here. And it just, on the surface, you know, without knowing specifically each section, I tend to give, and I think this council tends to give the Planning Commission a little bit more comprehensive understanding of what they present to us. And I said, I'll go with the will of the council, but my, I tend to go along with Councilman Termini's suggestion. Go ahead, Dennis.
Well, I remind the council that is the final sign on this document is the City Council, not the Planning Commission.
Aye.
Okay, agreed. So, if someone's in process, whatever direction and timing you take on this thing, it's going to come back to us for a final decision.
Yeah.
Okay. Because the Planning Commission does not accept the changes as recommended from the Coastal Commission, does not put us in a position of not accepting. In other words, it is our decision to accept them or not to accept them. And eventually in the end, if they made those recommendations, probably we're going to have to accept them. We don't have a lot of choice. I'm not saying to speed up the process, but if anything, I don't know that this needs to have another Planning Commission review. I do, I do think that it needs to maybe, maybe go to a public forum and open discussion on this thing. But it, we should, we should, we should approve it and move it on. We've got a long ways to go still. This is just, just part of the document. So, I would like to hear from staff, what kind of timetable, if we're not, if we're not going to approve this tonight, where do we, where do we go from here?
So, I think Katie does have a part of her presentation later tonight. She's going to talk about overall schedule, and I'll, I'll try to summarize briefly at the risk of redundancy. The Planning Commission, for all intents and purposes, is done looking at the zoning code for this calendar year. We have a meeting, a regular meeting, November 3rd. We have to review the wireless ordinance. We have a settlement agreement with deadlines. We need to get through that. That's going to take some time. Plus, we have a number of items on the regular agenda, so they really, I don't think have any time in that November meeting to make any additional progress. December meeting, again, I don't think there's going to be a lot of time there. I think everybody, at this point, has conceded that they will resume their work once a new commission is seated in January. So, this would be something that we would talk about with them, January, February timeframe of next year.
Even with our approval of this tonight, there's, the public process still continues on, there is still public review of this whole document. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's still going to be a number of public meetings between both the Planning Commission and City Council. There's going to be a public review period, and then there will be adoption hearings after that. So, you know, there's going to be several additional public meetings at a minimum.
So, in reality, we're not really approving this document. We're not approving this.
You're moving it along to the next step to get a final draft out that eventually will be out for the public review, and then there'll be adoption hearings. So, that's correct.
What is the downside on the time schedule of not approving this document tonight? What happens if we kick this back?
You know, given that there's still a fair amount of work to do on other chapters, I don't think it's significant. I mean, it just, it's one more chapter and, you know, however much time that takes to get through it. But I don't think there's an enormous schedule implication in light of everything else we have to do.
What's the will of the council? Is there a motion?
I move we approve.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Public like to weigh in on this one last time. Come on up.
Hello, Bob Edgar, Mayor, Council. I had a question, Rich. Is this a, you mentioned that you're moving the, it along for a final package like that will be looked at by the public. That final, so to speak, whoops. What, can the public make changes or is that kind of like, what's the flexibility at that point with the document? Thank you.
So, we would accept, you know, any comments from members of the public. We would evaluate them and make our recommendations to the Planning Commission, and ultimately City Council would make decisions on whatever changes are requested by the public.
So, we have a motion and a second to approve this document. Sue, can we do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Norton?
Aye.
And Councilmember Tran?
Aye.
Councilmember Termini?
No.
Mayor Bator?
No. So, with the two-two fails, does it go back to the Planning Commission?
By default.
By default. Okay, thank you. So, where does that take us?
Okay, that takes us to the next slide.
And are we back to the book?
We're now going to talk about the three items that were asked to come back for discussion. And those three items are small mobile vendor carts in the village, drive-through facilities in the regional commercial, and the vacation rental overlay, and we'll review those in that order. So, first, the conversation, oh...
What page? Are we back in the book or on the document?
Agenda. We are in the staff report. It's the three items that were going to come back.
Oh, got it.
This would be an amendment, a change to the central village mixed-use zoning district within the land use table, whether or not to add the category of small mobile vendor carts.
Small vendor cart in the village.
In the mixed-use village, yes.
Go ahead.
So, this was brought up by Councilmember Norton, I believe, during our, one of our special hearings, special meetings. And during the conversation, the City Council said they'd like to table this and get the word out to village business owners and return and continue the conversation. Right now, it's not allowed within the zoning code update. We don't have a land use category for small mobile vendor carts.
Question. Is this the same category as a food truck or is this a different category?
This would be smaller from my understanding of the idea that came up. It was more a small, I believe it's a human-powered vending cart that could either be attached to a bicycle or somebody could actually push it along with their hands. But we could better define that within the code.
No, I, did you, did you bring this up? Because I remember somebody brought up about a food truck, but I don't remember somebody bringing this up about this.
It was a different time.
Okay, all right.
And it was a discussion on popcorn and...
Go ahead. Let's, I'm ready. Go ahead.
So, I was going to look to you for discussion on this, and we did reach out to the BIA and they're aware, and there was an email that came in. But I haven't had additional emails since, so with that, that came to all of you last week.
Is there any guidelines on this that we're going to look at or you just want us to have a discussion?
No, it was more of a discussion of whether or not you'd like to allow this within the code. We could put in red lines into the code for the, when we redline the document for the final review.
Question. The Planning Commission looked at this and how did they respond?
The Planning Commission did not look at this. This was brought up, one of your special meetings.
So, this was never even a consideration at a planning level in the zoning code?
It was not.
Brand-new world. Okay, thank you.
Brand-new world, yes.
Any other questions, comments?
I'll have some comments if you're ready.
I'm going to go and ask the public if they would weigh in on it, then we'll come back and discuss it. So, at this time, we'll take anybody from the public would like to weigh in on small mobile vendor carts in Village.
Good evening, Karen Hannah, representing the BIA. Did not get an enormous amount of feedback from my email, but I did go door-to-door for, talk to quite a few people. And the, and you got Gary's email, right? It was pretty clear, everybody I spoke with felt, and I didn't get to too many restaurant people because it's so hard to find somebody in charge, like during the day, so that was a little bit tricky. But for the most part, it was unanimous, no carts. But if you decide we should have carts, because obviously the decision is yours, they should only be allowed by people who already have a storefront in Capitol Village, because they were just worried about, you know, somebody just coming in and not really having the commitment to the village, the issue of litter that Gary brought up again, and just the fairness, the people who are paying rent all year round, and then somebody comes in in the peak times and, and starts pushing a cart around selling something that somebody else... I mean, everything that anybody at the beach wants is available already in the village. It's just about a block or a block and a half walk. So, so the BIA stand would be to recommend against having carts. If they, if there are carts allowed, they should only be allowed by businesses. But it, that was, that was minor. It was like, well, if we have to have them, then this is, it should be only by people who are already paying rent in the village.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Come on up, Sam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Sam Story, resident of Depot Hill. And I just want to urge the council to, I think you should seriously consider this matter and the consequences of having small carts and maybe give the Planning Commission opportunity to, to look at the issue and look at really the consequences. And it would certainly seem to me, I would share the BIA's comments about it and certainly put limits on how many there could be, putting limits on where they could be, because on a busy holiday, they would be blocking the sidewalks if they were allowed to proliferate. And I think there is the issue of fairness to the local store owners who have their investment and who are, have, you know, and paying for their businesses and having these temporary and low overhead costs competing with them. So, I would just urge you to, to look at this matter very closely and very seriously before you approve it. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. Anyone else like to speak on this topic? We'll go ahead and bring it back for discussion. Who wants to? Doc, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a question.[1725.37]
Yeah, I just have a question. We see food carts depicted here. Would this be for other products, too, or...
You know, the idea came up, and it was more of a discussion of whether or not you'd like to have small carts in the village.
Just...
And then from there, we could get into the particulars. If the answer is yes, we would like to have small carts in the village, we could get... we could draft something up for you to review of exactly what you'd like those carts to be allowed to sell, the size of the carts, how they're handled. So, at this point, we didn't draft anything about what they could sell, or... This is primarily just a policy discussion of whether or not we should add it to the land use table and come up with standards.
One other thing I would like to point out is our municipal code does currently prohibit these uses in Chapter 12, outside the zoning code. So, if we wanted to allow this, we would be amending another section of code. And it would probably be my recommendation to deal with it in Chapter 12, not in Chapter 17 of the zoning code. But it is a land use item, and I think appropriate for discussion tonight.
Mike, Dennis, go ahead.
Any of us who've lived in this town over 30 years have seen those carts in village that operate very successfully, very cleanly. Mimi's, for example, was one. The type of carts that you're seeing here are... These are basically items that are not sold by any of the stores except for the supermarket in town. There's nobody sells popcorn. Popsicles you can get at the supermarket, that's it. This is not competition with those people out here. They would require to get a use permit anyway to do this vending thing, just as we did for Matt Arthur. He was required a use permit. Everything from their hours of operation and what they require to do is... It's a very controlled business. This isn't going to be an open business. It's okay to have fun in Capitola Village. It doesn't have to be sterile all the time. It can be... It can be a fun place. If it makes it fun for people to be there, it helps our tourist industry and makes it a much more exciting and fun place to be for people who live here. I see no damage at all in doing this. Those streets and those sidewalks belong to the community of Capitola. They do not belong to the businesses. They belong to the community of Capitola. And rightfully, somebody else should have an opportunity to do it. This is not competition with these local stores. These are... We can control by the use permit process what type of business that they operate there and what they sell. And there's a process for protecting any merchant that's there now. So, these are not competition. These are just a way of making Capitola Village a more fun place to visit. They're not going to be in their winter time. Those people are going to be there in the summer. That's the only time that they're going to be there. Probably, they're going to be sitting down towards the park area. So, I think it's a great idea. I think it's a way that we can make our community a more viable and fun place to be, particularly in the village area.
Mike?
I can just remember too many hearings here where we've considered this many different ways, anywhere from shaved ice to face painters. It's never a good thing. We never have a good night being up here when the village comes out about this. I take all the admonishment and Gary's letter to heart, and I would love to see it. It's romantic. It's picturesque. It's fun. It's a lovely idea, and I can support it.
Thanks. Question. We have a special use permit. I can't remember what it's called, but someone can do something twice a year. They can have an event. I think it recently happened down at Woodworm where they had an event, and they were able to bring in a food truck. If... I'm just going to use an example there. Let's say that Bella Roma wants to have an outside sale, and they get a special permit, and they want to bring in a pretzel truck for that one event. Would that be different from this? Would that fall into this?
It's a private property permit, I think.
Yeah, so we do allow up to two parking lot sales per year. We use those permits a little loosely for private events. And I just looked up the ordinance that established the prohibition of food carts and other merchandising in the central village, and it did exempt those that are a part of a special event. So, I think under that situation, it would be permissible.
Okay. Go ahead, Chuck. Do you want to comment?
Yeah, I thought you were going in a different direction. So, maybe an event citywide that had a variety, you know, people were brought out, you know, to celebrate something of interest and maybe add some attractions, but not every day, or not every day in the summer, or not on a regular basis. But special events, so maybe something in that sort of... I'd like to see what City Planning says, but...
Yeah, I'd like to... The only reason I can see is if, you know, if there was some event and somebody wanted to team up with the school district, wanted to come and sell popcorn on some regular event, based on the guidelines you said. But generally speaking, I think that my feeling of the village is this isn't appropriate for the village. This isn't what people want in the village. I don't want to create competition. I don't think it enhances the village. If someone, like I said, the example I gave, if somebody took a permit out twice a year and they wanted to bring something to that, whatever reason for that event, I... That's already allowed in our ordinance. But to create an ordinance to allow small mobile vendor carts in the village, I couldn't support. So, I'll take a motion from someone on the council if there's a feeling.
Move to deny the... Not include this as part of our zoning code.
I'll second that. Any other discussion? Sue, can we do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Norton?
The motion is to deny?
Deny.
No.
Councilmember Tran?
Yes.
Councilmember Termini?
Aye.
Mayor Botor?
Aye. That motion passes three to one to deny small mobile vendor carts in the village, with Councilman Norton dissenting. Next item.
Okay, next item. Drive-through facilities in the regional commercial. So, regional commercial is shown on the... This is the updated or the proposed zoning map. And regional commercial is C-R in bright red. The new code requires a conditional use permit within the regional commercial district for a drive-through facility. I've outlined the area in which they could be considered. A drive-through facility would have to be located more than 100 feet from a residential zoning district or a residential use. So, the discussion is, should we keep it as proposed within the code or remove the allowance of a conditional use permit review within the CR district? I wanted to show you what the estimated setback area would look like. That's about 100 feet when I looked at the tax maps. And so, if you kept it as proposed, that's the area in which a drive-through could not be built. If you increased the setback from 100 feet to about 200 feet, you could just imagine that line doubling. So, many of the properties along the side of 41st would not be able to have a drive-through. A lot of these properties are about, I think, about 240, 250 feet in depth. So, they could have a drive-through right along the front edge, but that would be it if you increased the setback area. And then over along Claire's, this would also double in space. So, just a reminder that there's the old Marie Callender's that sits here. We've had quite a few inquiries that come into the Planning Department regarding what can we do with that property. And there have been a few that have really pushed for in order for us to purchase this property, we'd want to have a drive-through. So, and some good businesses have inquired about that. So, that's one property in which we could see a drive-through coming in. And then, of course, there's, you know, Burger King has a drive-through right now. McDonald's has not been allowed to have a drive-through because they're so close to the residential. So, with that, we'll take discussion.
Questions first.
There's another option here, and we could also keep it as proposed but add additional conditions, could we not?
Of course.
Such as a drive-through would not only need a conditional use permit, but would have to come before the council? Would that be an acceptable...
Sure.
So, even in the red area there, and even with the green setback of 100 feet, and even with the conditional use permit, it couldn't just go through the Planning Commission, and a drive-through started to be built? We could make it so it had to go through the council. That's rational planning? Emma?
Sure. Yep. Your typical permits would go through Planning Commission, and then the City Council acts as an appeal board. So, there's a value in that, having played that function. But if you prefer to make sure that the City Council reviews every application, we can write it up that way.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
Any other questions before I open it up to the question?
I just have a question. So, we're not considering residences outside our city limits, like up at 41st?
Oh...
Like on the side of the street where Burger King is, up near the freeway, there's residences on that other side there, you know, behind Men's Warehouse, for instance. I mean, I'm just saying that, you know, the residents is also...
Do you understand the question?
I do. I don't think we've clarified that in our... in the draft, and we probably should clarify.
Whether that green line should extend all the way behind those properties?
Yeah, to... For the county properties, because you're absolutely correct.
That's a really, really good point.
Yeah, very good.
I think it should be included.
Yeah.
If we have a 100-foot setback, it should be...
Do you recognize other residences?
All residential.
Which are good neighbors of the county.
Very good.
Yes. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Ken.
Okay, good. Any other questions? Go ahead. Open up to the public. Anybody wants to weigh in on the drive-through facilities in the CR zone?
Thank you again, Mayor, Councilmembers. You know, we've always had, I think, concerns about drive-through operations, and I think we all understand what those are. Idling vehicles and just the nature of creating a more car-oriented community, and where we're trying to direct it toward more pedestrian and bicycle-friendly community. So, I would just encourage you to make sure that the council has the ability to review every possible application for a drive-through. And I know in the past, we allowed one at CVS from the pharmacy, and there was extensive discussion because of all the consequences that drive-throughs may create. So, just from that perspective, I would encourage you to follow Mike's suggestion that if... that they be under conditional use and that they always be reviewed by the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to weigh in on the drive-through? Go ahead. Bring it back for discussion. Dennis, go ahead.
Has anyone been to Scotts Valley? Is that what you want?
We're going to assume that it was the X.
Is that what you want, or what? The whole town's a drive-through.
I never stop in Scotts Valley. I always drive through.
You drive through.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You never have to get in town.
All my friends in Scotts Valley, I didn't mean that was a bad joke.
I'm going to name a series of different businesses that could operate. Is there any written as to what would be allowed? But I'm going to give you a list of possibilities here that... Obviously, coffee shops. There's a strong movement everywhere for that. But you could do laundry. You could do drive-through laundry. pharmacies. Pharmacies are already seen one. I think that the one that they did at CVS is an absolute disaster. You created this big, giant parking lot area with no cars, and people drive through. Instead of seeing someone, if they walk up to the counter that are sick, you don't see them because they're sitting in the car and they're driving away sick. So, it's... I take it back. It's helpful to a mother who has sick kids in the car. I got to say that that is helpful. A tire repair place. You could have a drive-through tire repair place. You come in, drive in, they change all your tires, you sit in the car. We already have that because we already have oil change, oil change services where you drive your car, and you never get out of your car and drive through the other side. The car washes. We already have one in our town that you drive through. You could sit in your car. I don't know that anybody does that, but you could. But basically, they take you through in the same manner. Massage products wouldn't work. You wouldn't be there long enough.
By the way, just wanted to let you know that.
And you've got to look at some of them that we have in town. Burger King is a horrible setup. I mean, there's not a worse setup in town than the Burger King in its loop and putting cars through that thing. It's just unbelievable. So, you know, I think we're fine to where we're at. There's... I can't think of any place that would be acceptable in town to a drive-through. And so, I think we're fine with the ordinance that we have. We've operated that for years. We don't need to encourage people to sit in their car any more than they are other than walking or moving around. It's a health issue, too. So...
Just to point out, the current ordinance does not prohibit drive-throughs. They're allowed under the current ordinance.
Go back to the first... I think it's our page one in this, Katie. Is there the first slide without the options? Was the... That's it.
Let me give you one more example is the Orthodontist Building. Well, everybody knows what should happen there. McDonald's wanted to drive through. They should have blocked that building. They've been in a front row on the front there. They already had a drive-through. But there wasn't even a business out there that wanted that building as a drive-through. They had a perfect drive-through. It's already built there. Nobody even wanted it. So, is there a demand for it? Maybe there is demand for it out there. But I don't think that we need to use more spaces for idling cars and roadways within this community. We have enough roads, and that's exactly what you build when you do that. Thank you.
Brady?
I would bring to your attention that high on the list of our library design, pushed by the administration and the librarians, is a drive-through book drop-off. Think about that. And we can go back to the mother with the child strapped in the car, and whatever you have to say about whatever food she's buying at this drive-through, I can understand going through it. We had a relatively high-end restaurant, Panera's, looking at Marie Callender's. Good establishment. Panera's has a drive-through. It's their corporate standard. And I can't imagine a better place to put one than on Claire's nested in the vast parking lot of the mall. I think there's... That's yet another parking space we don't need because they drive in, get what they want, and leave. And I'm not looking to open this up to allow drive-throughs everywhere. I'm not looking for a rubber stamp. I'd like to constrict it a little bit and make sure it always comes to the council. I'm trying to get the stigma of the word "drive-through" out of our zoning. It doesn't belong there. And to say, well, drive-throughs aren't Capitola, what a snobby thing to say. I mean, seriously. If someone has a business model, and the council carefully considers it, and the Planning Commission carefully considers it, and it's in the middle of that vast red sea there, let them put it off, anyway.
Chuck?
I'd be willing to bet this council chamber would be completely packed if In-N-Out wanted to come to Capitola.
Yeah, of course.
So, that's sort of what you're talking about.
They've rejected Capitola.
They may have, but I...
Was that it?
Yeah, that's the reality of drive-throughs, really.
Okay. You know, I want to remain open on this. I don't see a problem in this zone, if this CR district is zone. I think... When I think of the drive-through at CVS, I think it's very functional. I think it's for a lot of people that are handicapped, that have trouble getting out of their car to come in and get their prescriptions. The drive-through? Oh, no, I've... I get my prescriptions there, okay. I've seen it being used, and I hear people come in that complain because they had to get out of their car. And exactly with the mother with the kids, you know, the ordeal of getting the kids out of the car to come in and get a prescription. So, I think that was a drive-through that worked. If we say ones that work and don't work, I don't have the strong opinion that Dennis does about Burger King. But what I'd like to do is I have no problem with this going through the full process, as was suggested, where it goes through the Planning Commission and then the City Council. Because normally, we tend to... If the Planning Commission approves something, we accept that. And the default would be that if there's an appeal, if they said no, it would come to us. But if the criteria on this, since we don't allow them now, if the criteria wasn't if someone were to make a motion that said it would require two votes from the Planning Commission, two successful votes, Planning Commission and City Council, I think that gives us many avenues to make sure that the public gets to weigh in on it. We look at specific examples of, you know, like you said, what's going to happen with the Marie Callender's property, what's going to happen with that whole mall development, what... It's very logical that if a Starbucks, a new trendy Starbucks were to go into that mall development down the road, somebody would be asking for a drive-through there. So, it's not saying we're going to approve them all, but I think to close the door to them, if they make sense. I just think it's something the council should look at. So, I would support a two-board approval if that was the motion.
I would move that we allow drive-throughs in the CR zone. I would also like to incre... Oh, you did that already for me. Look at that. It would require Planning Commission and automatic review by the council as well, as well as extending the 100-foot zone to the adjoining city limits to protect our neighbors in the county.
I'll second that. Seconded by Tran, motion by Termini. Any other conversation on that? Sue, can we do a roll call vote on that?
Councilmember Norton?
No.
Councilmember Tran?
Aye.
Councilmember Termini?
Aye.
Mayor Botor?
Aye. That motion carries three to one with Norton dissenting. Thank you. Next item.
Okay, next, we will talk about the vacation rental boundary. And this was reviewed by the Planning Commission recently, and they brought forth a recommendation. There's been quite a bit of public input that we received at the time of Planning Commission with a mix of support and non-support on expanding the vacation rental. The original... The reason why we did propose the two areas that are shown in this map is because members of the public did come forward during our large vacation rental sweep this summer and asked, would the Planning Commission or City Council consider extending the vacation rental boundary? We'd like to be considered. And we said, well, you came in at the right time. We'll bring it to them during the zoning code update. So, when the Planning Commission reviewed... I'll first look at the Capitola Avenue. The Planning Commission reviewed the expansion on Capitola Avenue, and it also was an expansion along Blue Gum here. Their recommendation to the City Council was to expand the TRO, the vacation rental boundary, along Capitola Avenue. These properties along Blue Gum don't have rights to the same parking privileges as the properties along Capitola Avenue, so that's why they took them out of... They didn't think that they should also be included in the expansion. So, I don't know if you'd like to discuss this separately, if you want to begin with the discussion on Capitola Avenue, and then we can next go to El Camino Medio. You might make it easier.
I'd like to do that, but I'd also like to ask what the vote was on the Planning Commission for exing out the Blue Gum row of houses, 404, 406, 408, 409?
I believe it was full support to remove the Blue Gum.
Got it. Thank you.
Full support to approve the ones and full support to deny the others.
Full support to approve the ones and full support to deny the other ones.
Correct.
Okay. That's good to know. We're gonna deal with this individually, Katie.
What about the planning commission on El Camino? What was their?
I'm sorry, can you?
The planning commission feelings and the vote on El Camino?
On El Camino, they, the planning commission recommended not expanding the TRO for El Camino.
Also unanimous.
That was unanimous. They did talk about whether or not they should consider one property that's on the right-hand, that's to the south of the staircase. And there was conversation on that with knowing that the hotel might come in. I think it's 190 El Camino Medio. I'll go to the next slide so you can...
I, I know which one you're talking about. The one that joins the theater property.
Exactly. So there was a good conversation that occurred about that one property alone and whether or not it should be expanded for that property alone since the future hotel would be next door. But after a thorough discussion on it, they decided not to include that in the TRO as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Open up to the public for comments on the overlay zones on El Camino Medio and on Capitola Road. Hi, Bob.
Hi, how's that road you doing? Is this a good time to bring up? The reason I'm here is to talk about extending the zone up Capitola Avenue. I'm not sure who is here tonight to...
We're only discussing extending it to this limit. So it's, so just for reference, it's gonna be, this recommendation would be to only add the parcels on Capitola Avenue up to where the Avenue Cafe is.
Okay. I had directed from Steve to, I mean, from Rich to bring this up right after Katie.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Well, I've owned property on Cap, middle of Capitola Avenue for, since 75. And I've known many of the neighbors there. Over time, it's become increasingly more commercial. We, they added the double line. I can't remember what year. But if you, if you're trying to rent out to a family, it's very, very difficult. People just don't wanna have kids anywhere near a double-lined street. So it's gotten very, there's really only a handful of residential properties on Capitola Avenue anymore. They've all converted to commercial in one form or another. It's been very difficult to rent these out to families or to people because they, they look at the busy street, the noise, everything else. And I, I don't, did you all receive my letter and also the one from Shelley Lowry about their properties? And yeah, it basically addresses the fact that there's just, it's time to really look at moving this up to, up the avenue. I think kind of like about 21 properties on, from, from Blue Gum to, to Bay. There's only really a handful between Beverly and Bay. So this is something that, you know, commercial neighborhood, whatever, has been always a kind of a flexible little zone and, but it's just become over-commercialized. Everything is commercial now. And I don't think allowing visitors from out of town or overnight visitors is going to hurt any neighbors there because most of, most of the time during the day, there's nothing going on. I think people would bring in more fresh money as visitors. You'd get more transient tax and I think this is a good, good time to do it.
Thank you for those comments. Anyone else like to comment on this yet? Come on up.
Hi, Mayor. Hi, Council. I'm Connie Smith and my family owns the home immediately across the way. 502 Beulah Drive, the yellow house. And my parents had that house for 60 years. My mom just passed away a couple of weeks ago. And we now, as her surviving family, are doing all we can to retain that home in the family. Something like our inclusion, and if you look at the map, we are an island. When we, or my parents first got here, the nature of the community was totally different. Now we sit on a four-way intersection and we are surrounded on the backside by a police annex, on our periphery by two parking lots, and next door by the police station, City Hall, and across the street by Avenue Cafe. The character of our community is very different from what it once was. And our family, in order to retain this home, hope that you would consider adding 502 Beulah to the overlay. We have two onsite parking spaces, a single-car garage, we have a driveway. We also have an immediate street parking space in front of the home. So there would be very little negative impact to, you know, a neighborhood, so to speak, since we are, of course, our own little island. So I bring that to your attention and I apologize for not having had come to a planning commission meeting or bringing this up earlier, but with my mom still alive, it was not something at all on our radar. But now that, that has changed and our hope to retain the house is largely dependent upon the income that we can bring in, we definitely want y'all to consider inclusion of 502 Beulah. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public on this item? Okay, we'll bring it back for discussion. Dennis?
I don't think on, on the lower end of Capitola Avenue, those four lots even have a parking space.
You're right.
They're so tight, they don't even have parking spots. So what would happen if you went to a bed and breakfast on those properties? Then you, what you'd have to do is you'd have to grant permits that actually use the Pacific Cove parking lot for those spaces. So, and also, it is a very difficult backup spot right there on. And that's one of the reasons the, the building that was just granted by the Tressle has no parking spaces. And the reason it does is because it doesn't have a, doesn't have room to back up right there. There's no way to back up on that avenue. So lower, the, the upper six, there's a couple of them with parking spaces, but they're on the side of the building, they're, you know, they're directly across from City Hall. Maybe there could be some, there's some two-story structure there that maybe they could be, they could be, be integrated into. I, I agree with the previous speaker. And in, in the history of this, I remember an application maybe 15, 20 years ago that a person up, up the street on the right hand, on her side of the street, who owns one of the, it's actually a duplex now, applied for a bed and breakfast. And they were denied by the city at the time to put it in there. Although I've always felt that that section there is more indigenous to a bed and breakfast than this lower section because all of those buildings on the left and the right side all have parking that should go up there. They're all really in a commercial area. They're a mixture of commercial and residential, that they would fit pretty well and not disturb neighborhoods along that avenue. So that makes more sense to me than the lower. The lower four, I just don't, I could be wrong, but I don't think there's one parking spot within that, within that area. Why, why are the two in between left out? Is there something different about those lots?
They're already in the district.
They're included because they go all the way through.
They're in the TOT district.
Okay. Well, I don't know. I, I, I think if, if you plan on giving parking permits to those things for bed and breakfast, then this would work. But otherwise, if you look at those buildings, they're just, the one next door to the one that we granted here, that's just a little tiny cabin on that lot. And that's all, that, and even at that, both these, both these houses almost fill the whole lot. So there's not really a room to expand in that zone. What's the zoning right there?
This is mixed-use neighborhood in the new zoning code. I should point out, the next two properties are the fire station. So that's, that's public facilities, so that will probably draw the line.
Okay, then so it's only the two on the end?
And the one is Charlie and Company, so it's not even a, I mean, there's only one residence that's in there. Is that correct?
I don't see any reason to do that fourth section right there, that lower section. Maybe on the upper one.
It was just to be consistent with, with, with the, like I said, it's a fire station and it's Charlie and Company. So the only, I believe only the second unit is actually a residence. Is that correct?
That's correct. And there was discussion at planning commission about the fire station and also those two units. There were several points of, you know, the, the transient rental overlay is over a mixed-use zone, so it will be over commercial properties as well as residential. And when we take, they will have another look at the zoning code update and I'd like to highlight those two properties to them when we go back to make sure that I got this correct because it was a bit confusing in the way the dialogue went of whether or not they wanted to. They, they wanted to ensure that the properties along Capitola Avenue that were included would have access to parking, which can be achieved within the public parking. But I would like to, I will when we go back, ensure that their intention was to have those other two properties.
Katie, is there any, is there any discussion at all of going up Capitola Avenue, on up?
There was no discussion on that at the planning commission of them really considering extending it further than Riverview.
I would like, I'd like to extend that, that question. I think that that property on Capitola Avenue is really indigenous to that type of business. They don't interrupt neighborhoods. They enter right off of that main thoroughfare. They have parking as you go up the road on the left and right. They're larger lots. Being continuous here is fine, but I, I just, I don't see any, the lower four, it's not something we'd ever have considered an application for, I don't think, for, for that type of use. I mean, the, the new building was just built, was built with conditions that you can't have residential upstairs, I think. Or you can't, or you can't have residential upstairs, you can't have commercial. Is that what it was?
I would, I would have to revisit the application.
Okay. It, just the point is, is that they were, they were granted with a number of exceptions and, and to grant more in a different use doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So Fire Department's not good.
You wouldn't support the firehouse bed and breakfast when they move out of the floodplain?
If you get a second story, they make good meals, so that's...
Leave the fire pole in.
I think it'd be a great B and B.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mike.
I would support the planning commission's recommendation only because the, all of these properties shown here are adjacent to TOT area, the transient occupancy district, as opposed to the ones further up Capitola Avenue, which I don't support. And there's a reason why we didn't extend it up because the houses behind them are all residences on Oak Drive, actually. So there's, you know, if you go all the way up to Gales. Right now, the light commercial is in there, the, the nail salons, beauty shops, the dentist, they're, they're a gentle transition. I never thought of the Sullivan House, though, and it's a really good point. I, and I wonder if we could include that and if we're able to restrict it to single rentals and not turn it into a 10 couple vacation madhouse. What about a B and B? You know, it, again, it, it is right across the street from neighborhood houses, but it does, also stands alone to a certain degree. So I don't think as a single rental, it, it would impact because of where it is. Again, next to the police department, City Hall, parking lot. And I, I'd like to discuss that.
Mike, you know, if you look at the ones in the lower three, they're also all back, back into residential too. That's Bob Henry's house. That's, that's all residential.
Yeah, but everything that's blue is transient district.
Everything that's blue is already overlay.
It already is. And Bob could, could have rented his house out at the time.
Doc?
So I take a little bit different look here. So I think some of this came up because we're looking at the zoning right now. So I, I completely agree with that timing. When I was on the economic development group, we met up at the chamber. I think I was, remember that since the beginning. I've been thinking of this Capitola Avenue as a transition zone from the village all the way up to Bay and Gales, okay? And I think that there's probably gonna be a natural progression, growth in that area as the city sees economic opportunity there. The new business near the Tressle is an example. So I went by and talked with her and she said, you know, I, I see Capitola Avenue as a, as a place for growth, for potential growth. I'm not gonna put words in her mouth, but I'm pretty sure she thought that this is gonna be opportune, especially as the years go by. So ever since, like I said, being on the economic development commission, committee, my sense is that to, to help make the village a little more viable, making this connection would be really beneficial to the city of Capitola and to the people who own property along those street, that street. So what I'd like to do is have the, the city, city council, direct city planning to look at Capitola Avenue between Bay and the Tressle, let's say, as a special zone and try to look at that as a whole. So it's an area of transition. We have businesses there. Some are relatively low-impact like nail salons. We have doctor offices, we have realty offices. We also have quite a few residents. We also have a mix of some of almost very old, almost iconic places of residence in, in Capitola. You think of that one that's a series of about four or five garages as you drive up towards Gales on the right. You know, that whole area back there is almost, it's a wonderful little garden place with little cottages and stuff like that. So to me, this whole street is a special area and I kinda like to look at it as a whole. I think that the pressures I'm talking about are gonna mount. I was talking to a Realtor up, I said Monterey Bay, okay, Monterey Bay Realtors. And as this city grows and its pressures from around us increase in terms of trying to make things economically viable, those properties are gonna be worth a lot more. And as those properties become, increase in value, the uses are gonna be increased. They're gonna change. So I kinda like this city to take a special look at Capitola Avenue with the realization that, yeah, right now it looks good to put some Airbnbs or, you know, stuff like that. That kinda looks good because that's what we're thinking about right now. But I'm thinking 10, 15 years from now, the conditions are gonna be different. And so that's why I'd like the city council to say to city planning that we need to prepare for what the future's gonna be. I think it's inevitable. And I'd like to position Capitola through the zoning process to make what's best for Capitola happen. But we need to look at it first, try to understand the different lots. We need to know the lot sizes. As Jamie pointed out to me today, we need to understand some of the things that are here in Capitola that make it the way it is. Like I said, some of that iconic housing. And we need to take into account the fact that some of this, some of these lots border on residences. You know, they don't want party houses next to them. And the other thing is that sidewalk is so narrow. I mean, it's just not a place for people to be walking up and down and to enjoy that as a commercial area if that's what it's gonna become. I don't know what it's gonna become, but I think it's worth our while to look at it and prepare what I think is gonna be a future. And that's gonna be a corridor connecting Bay around Gales to downtown Capitola. And, you know, we should take a look at it. And so instead of moving on small bits and pieces and sort of incrementally changing things when we don't know where it's gonna go, I think is a mistake. Now, how long this process would take? I'm not saying an extensive process that takes years, but, you know, I think a, a look, a reasonable process to get a better understanding of what we're trying to impact and influence is really worth our effort, especially considering that this area's gonna change. That's the way of these things and we should be prepared for it.
Do you have another comment?
Just a question. I'm not understanding what you're proposing. Besides studying something, are you saying that there's a potential for increase, for extending the transient district up Capitola Avenue to Bay?
Okay. I'm saying that that area, I'm not sure what it's gonna become, but I think that...
Community commercial right now.
Yeah, right. So what's gonna happen to the businesses there? I, I think these things are gonna change, okay? And I'm not saying, as Bob did, that we should go, you know, have these Airbnbs all the way up there. I just would like us to get a better understanding of what the lay of the land is first and then make our mind up.
About what?
About whether we want the Airbnbs to go up there.
That's not a, that's not a question, Mike.
Let me, let me just clarify. Because what, just say, what, what we're discussing, what's before us tonight...
Yes.
Is to vote on these eight or nine parcels. This is a recommendation from the planning commission.
Okay, well...
Hold on. In, in addition, what, so what's before us is to discuss these parcels. What I think I hear you saying is you wanna bring into discussion another separate altogether discussion about extending it up Capitola Avenue, which, you know, my feeling on that is, well, that's something that should go to the planning commission first for them to discuss and come back to us. But what I see before us tonight is acting on these parcels.
Hey, can you answer me that?
Yeah, go ahead, Dennis.
Mike and I have a potential conflict of interest in even discussing this right here. Up Capitola, we probably don't, but right here, we, we can't really vote on this.
I think we're, I think, are we far enough away for this, or are we stepping out in this one area?
Yeah.
That's a good question.
Are we in the sphere?
I thought for sure when we crossed Riverview Drive, we'd be in trouble, but I don't know if we can even talk about these.
We go clear to the city hall property, so.
With the new 500, 300, we're probably not eligible to be talking about this.
And one of us has to stay up here by drawing straws, because we have to maintain a quorum. So, should that not be the process in this first part?
I think that that is correct, that probably, before you take a vote, unfortunately, we didn't call this to your attention earlier, but we should probably draw straws.
Anybody want to break the straws?
Mike, you stay, I'm going to step out.
You're going to step out?
I think I should.
I think we have to draw. That was a great gesture, but.
I actually don't think drawing straws is the appropriate thing to do in this instance, because the lack of a quorum is only due to the absence of Councilmember Harlan, and it's not a time-sensitive issue.
So, should we stay this?
I would stay it.
Good, then that's fine. No, we can't, because.
No, we got an opinion for you.
We have broken perfectly.
It already, the lead was already.
Before I move, I just, can I make, can I make one more last comment, or is that inappropriate this time?
I want to respond.
I think at this point.
Okay, everybody else has commented, but myself, so I'd just like to make a comment. What, on these parcels here, I think what our intent was, was to close off or to make this a contiguous zoning, okay, and I don't have a problem with any one of these parcels. And with the recommendation that was made by the Sullivan House, I would be willing to include that in this location, primarily because Mrs. Sullivan endured the city and everything they did for so many years, but indirectly, we did create that island with our forensics storage and our police and the city hall, and I wouldn't have a problem with that being included in the zone, and I'll just say at this point, we'll carry this on to the next item, or the next agenda when we have a full council. At that point, we will have three with two recusings, and we'll vote then.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And apologize for not bringing it up earlier.
No, it's, it's okay.
Took your seat away, so.
We, we got.
City manager rose, brought the issue to my attention, and I mentioned it to Dennis as the discussion was.
Okay, good. Well, I'm glad we caught it when we did, before we voted, so there's, I think we're okay. So, we're done with that topic, we'll move on to the next topic.
Yeah, so it's.
But I just wanted to answer your question, or Mike's question. Yeah, but I did want to clarify, so.
I think we can't talk on it anymore.
Cannot talk about.
Yeah, that's what I said, we were done with the conversation.
We'll bring it back.
We're going to bring it back.
Okay. Next, the planning commission looked at El Camino Medio, and in their review of El Camino Medio, it was a negative recommendation to the city council to include this in the TRO, and as I previously mentioned, the home at 190 El Camino Medio, there was further discussion on due to its proximity to possibly a future hotel, and they still decided, let's keep this, let's keep that property out of the transient rental as well.
Any questions, any questions of, anyone from the public like to weigh in on El Camino Medio? Seeing none, we'll close it, bring it back for discussion.
I have a question, the Blue Whale House, that's not in it, then?
No, that's no.
Why, what was the reason for that?
It's on that side of the street, so none of them are in there.
No, I'm talking about the Blue Whale House.
That's it.
That's 190.
190.
That's 190. But there is no line in, that's.
No, there is, you can see the stairway in between it, there's a little gap there for the stairs in between it.
All the properties shown.
The Blue Whale House is right on this side of it, is the ocean side of the staircase.
That's what it is, you can see the stairway.
That's 190.
There's a tiny little gap between 190 and 200, and that's the stairway.
This is it, right here.
You need to go to optometers.
190.
It's hard to see.
It is hard to see.
You know, I've seen the calculations on how much we could make, but, you know, at $90,000 a year, I'm not willing to sell the quality of life of an adjacent neighborhood for $90,000 a year. There isn't enough money to do that. I'm all for the planning commission's.
Is that a motion?
The motion is to uphold the planning commission's recommendation to not include those residences in the transient district.
Second. Any other discussion? Sue, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Norton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bertrand?
No.
Councilmember Termini?
Aye.
Mayor Botroff?
Aye.
The motion carries to uphold the planning commission decision, three to one.
I'm still confused on the blue overlay, because what we did is, we actually, in essence, we subdivided up the theater property. There's four different, we show, it's not like that anymore.
The blue overlay is where it's allowed today, the transient rental, and then the orange was what was proposed for additional properties.
The blue has always been allowed, and the yellow was in question, and we just.
I think what Dennis is saying is the uppermost white parcel.
Right.
Is really not in the theater, is that a parking lot?
Well, it doesn't matter, it wouldn't be allowed anyway.
There's no building, there's no building in front of 190.
Right. Nothing there. I think the easiest way to explain what's going on there on the map is, is that the property that was the former theater site has an overlay TRO over a portion of it, but not over the whole thing.
Yeah, that's, that's the old map before the road was shifted. The road is, the road is up up there, but it.
It should be white, it should be white.
But what's confusing is, is that the road that goes to El Camino Medio goes directly across from 190. Bob corrected us of that.
Right, that's Susas, that, the narrow.
That's, yes.
Right.
Yes.
And that blue square.
No, it's not.
It is, I think so.
No, because Susas is not in front of 190. 190 has nothing in front of it.
So, I think that this is Susas.
Oh, okay.
This is where the relocated El Camino Medio comes out.
Correct.
This is basically a chunk of the park.
It should just be white.
I don't think it matters too much.
Right.
There's not going to be a single-family home that turned into a vacation rental over there.
I think what's confusing to me is just all those property lines in there that.
Right, I think that's exactly right, but if you, this is El Camino Medio here, which could be, you know, or the TRO, and then that's Susas, there's that's Blue Whale, then this is all the.
Well, if that, if that section is visitor-serving, why isn't the whole property visitor-serving?
I'll correct. Sue, there was some confusion on the vote, Councilmember Bertrand meant to vote in favor of the motion to deny, which means that that motion is unanimous.
Yeah, my mistake.
It was a negative.
Negative, to deny the motion, to uphold the motion, so that is four, zero unanimous to uphold the planning commission's decision. Are we okay with that procedurally? Okay. Okay, takes us to.
That takes us to, okay, we're going to jump back into the zoning code update.
Into the binder.
And you're going to open your binder to page 96-21, and we're going to start with temporary uses and structures within the permits and administration, part four. So, temporary uses and structures, here we have codified a lot of the practices that we've been utilizing at the planning counter, so if someone wants to do a seasonal sale of Christmas trees or pumpkins, they can come in and know exactly what type of permit they need. Also, the temporary outdoor display and merchandise and parking lot sales, that hadn't been codified previously, so now we have the policy that we've been utilizing within the code to explain exactly the permitting process for that. We've added farmer's market allowances and everything from, you know, your temporary storage of when you're packing to move, you can have that onsite for two weeks, but after that, you've got to go to a higher board and get an approval of a conditional use permit. So, this chapter, this section of the chapter really outlines a lot of processes that are practiced at city hall, but hadn't been codified. So, with that, any questions or?
Any questions or comments, or is there consensus on these changes? You okay?
Yep.
Michael?
Good.
We have consensus on those changes.
Okay, we'll move forward to unattended donation boxes. These are the donation boxes, there's a great example in front of the mall. When you drive by the mall, you may see a couple of donation boxes out front that you can drop off your used clothing.
Clothing, clothing.
Sometimes they collect books. This was going to create a process for a use permit in order to have an unattended donation box. The planning commission, in reviewing this, thought they're problematic within the town, and, yeah.
Is this the same as the red box, is this under that category?
No, this is different, this is donations.
Okay, right, okay.
Unattended donation boxes. So, when the planning commission looked at this, they said, we don't want to create an avenue for this, we just want them prohibited, they can, people can go to the Goodwill and drop off, or they can go to Grey Bears and drop off, but they felt that it was a nuisance to keep them in parking lots. And we did, within our zoning code, we had written it up that it would also need the police department's review.
By approving this, we're just going to get rid of them all?
Exactly.
Is there anyone who has a problem with that?
I'm there with you.
We are in consensus.
Okay, we'll move on.
And public, we're back to raise your hand if you have any concerns about these. Go ahead.
Okay, next is the mobile home park conversions. This chapter has not changed at all since the chapter that we have in our zoning code, and that is due to this is state-regulated, it was, advice is given to us not to modify it at this time, there's no reason to modify it, so with that, I'll take any comments.
Hopefully, we won't have to deal with it again.
That would be good, hopefully it's right. Any comments on this section? Okay, consensus, Michael? Good, we're good with that section?
Okay, we're moving on to part four, permits and administration. It's the last, well, second to last part of the zoning code. I have a couple slides in which I'll go into detail for certain review processes, but the administrative responsibilities, I do not have additional slides on administrative responsibilities, this just outlines the planning commission and the review and decision-making bodies.
Okay. Yes, on page 108-2.
Yes.
I'd like to change of sign permits, administrative sign permits, explain between that and sign permits.
An administrative sign permit, so within the sign regulations, we created two avenues. We have stricter, more stringent regulations for sign permits that can be approved over the counter, as long as they comply with the regulations, and then, so that could be approved at a staff level, and then a, that would be the administrative sign permit, and then, planning commission would do the regular sign permits, they would make the recommend, they would do the.
I'd like to propose all sign permits go past the planning commission.
Mike, you, we're creating more bureaucracy. There's no reason to have it go through when you, you have, you have a review process with administrative rules already that the person has to apply to. You know what it costs for, right now, to go through a planning commission with a sign permit? It's really expensive, but I don't, and so.
What is that, what if someone appeals to the planning commission after administrative? Because after administrative approval, the next time the community knows about it is when the sign's been built and being installed. Would that cause more hardship to the owner if it got appealed to the planning commission at that point? I don't know. I mean, I'm just putting this out for discussion, I'm not, you know, dying on this sword, trust me.
Are you recommending that all sign permits go to the planning commission?
I want to consider that, is that something we want to do? And I take, I take Dennis's point, it's very well taken, and I've been a real proponent of letting a lot of things go administratively. The problem with a sign permit is, again, no one has a basis of appeal generally until they see a sign going up, because it's all happened over the counter.
One thing I think might be helpful is if we could hear from the planners a little bit about the planning commission's process on this, because I know the planning commission devoted a significant amount of energy to the code as written, and so maybe, maybe we could hear a little bit about.
Yeah, city manager's correct, the planning commission spent quite a bit of time going through the sign ordinance, and their recommendation was that we do simplify and streamline the process by developing really prescribed standards for signs, and if an applicant meets those standards, they get an over-the-counter permit much cheaper. If they don't, then the planning commission has to consider those applications. One of the things that we heard a lot when we did our stakeholder outreach is, it costs people more to permit the sign than to buy the sign. And that's something that as an administrator, you know, is always a little bit bothersome, so we thought this might be a good way to streamline the process for those folks that develop a sign that's in strict compliance with our code.
Satisfied, thank you. Yeah, and I think that the key point is, they are in strict, because the ones that I'm aware of, the ones that came, I think there was a sign, a surfboard on Beach House Meadows, these were all things that were consistent with what we were allowing in the village, and if there's anything out of the unusual, then the planning would read, or the staff would read, read, tag that, and it would go to the commission, so I think this is a good recommendation. Jacque, you have something you wanted to say?
Thank you.
Okay, so we.
Make sure no backlit signs.
No, they're sensitive to that, I say, this is.
I want to just add one thing to this, and that is, is that the more minutia type of decisions that we put on the planning commission, the less thorough they're going to be with important planning commissions. In other words, you load up their agenda, you load up planning staff, and so the process needs to be where they can administer easily and make a decision whether it needs to go to the planning commission, and not burden our planning commission with things that aren't as important as regular planning.
I think the planning commission nailed it on this, I think this is a good recommendation. So, are we okay with this chapter, consensus? We are okay with this chapter.
Okay, we'll move to 112-1, page 112-1, this is permit application and review.
Okay, anybody have any questions or concerns in this chapter?
Can I go back a page?
Sure, you can go back.
On the makeup of the Arkansasite Committee.
Page are you on, Dennis?
108 Gastro Street.
Yeah, go ahead. Oh, okay.
This is separate, so I was ready for that one. Okay, question?
So, just talk about what, how does Arkansasite work now, and what is the makeup?
So, it went from the design review committee to a design review purpose, sorry, process is how we outlined it, and then, the participating staff and consultants, is that you'll have a member of the community development staff for planning, building, and public works at that meeting. We will also have contracted positions, so there'll be a city contracted landscape architect and a city contracted architect, and they'll be brought into the design review process for significant and/or sensitive projects as determined by the community development director. They'll typically always participate when there's a new proposed multifamily or any non-residential construction project, so your larger, your commercial projects and your multifamilies, they'll definitely be brought in for.
Okay. What, in a, in a, in a single-family residence, they would just be reviewed by staff, then? Is that correct?
Typically, it would just be reviewed by staff unless the community development director thought it would be appropriate to get another opinion. The other part of this is that there, right now, we have a local historian on that group, and as you can recall, at our last meeting, we discussed the changes in the historic chapter, that we'd also have a contract position for an architectural historian that would be looking at whenever it's a single-family home that's a historic remodel.
Historic house.
That's separate from the design review process.
Okay, and when would you know in process whether that's required? In other words, is this, is that decision made after you submitted plans, and then it was planning, it's planning commission, excuse me, planning staff's decision whether the architect has to review it or not? Or is that decision, is that hold true in the ordinance that if it's a single-family, it's not historic, that it doesn't require a second, an architect's review?
The application would have to go before the design review team, the planning, public works, and at that point, when we're scheduling for Arkansasite, I think we would check in with the community development director and see, you know, if there was a multifamily, we'd know, you know, but for a single-family, at that point, if we had concerns, we could bring it up to the community development director and ask for that assistance with Rich's guidance.
Yeah, I would add to that, that, you know, this is a bit of a departure from the current process, where we have a formal committee that the council appoints, and it's a Brown Act committee, although it doesn't usually function as a Brown Act committee. This would be more of an internal process that we would handle, you know, with the applicants and design consultants, so it'd kind of streamline that process, hopefully keep us out of any Brown Act trouble, and, you know, I think it would be a benefit, at least from administrative perspective.
When you place your application, is, how do you determine the fee what, on the process for a single-family?
The fees.
Yeah, how would you determine that?
So, it's all based on the fee schedule, depending on what type of project you have, those are the fees. Now, if there are consultants that are involved, the applicant's responsible for those costs, plus, I believe, 21% city administration fee on top of that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Jacque, question?
So, you sort of answered it, so it's not Brown Act, so the public's not notified when this occurs?
No, there'd be no public notice, it would be more just internal staff working with consultants and the applicants to refine a project.
Do you feel the public has been detrimental to the process in the past, and they would not offer anything to it in the future?
No, I wouldn't characterize it that way, I think the reality is, is the public very rarely participates in the Arkansasite Committee meetings, and when they do, they don't understand it. They show up, they think decisions are going to be made, they expect it to operate like a city council meeting, that's not at all how it functions. So, I think if anything, it's been, it's been a source of confusion for the public many times, they expect a different result than design advice that's given to the applicant, which is really all it does.
So, if they did understand the process, they could add to the considerations that city planning would take into account?
This is, this is advisory council, not a decision-making council.
No, I know, that's why I said, add to the considerations that city planning or city staff would.
You could possibly do it, you could create a whole new level of.
We're already deep enough in, in the process now. They have, the same decisions that are made there are passed on to the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission makes the decision on. So, that's the public hearing.
Well, I've been part of two such Arkansasite reviews, and it's my sense that it actually added to the planning process at an early stage. See, that's the beauty of it, at an early stage, before it gets to the city, city planning.
From my perspective, when I, I think two cases that we've had, members of the public show up to an Arkansasite meeting, they were controversial projects, and those people were talking to us independent and irrespective of the Arkansasite meeting.
Yeah.
You know, it was, it wasn't only that option, they had been communicating with us regularly anyway. I, I don't see a lot of, at least in my, you know, three and a half years here, I haven't seen a lot of benefit to that process.
If there was public concern and you knew about it, could they at least be in the audience? Or in the meeting room?
They can attend, they, you know, any one of our community meetings can do it.
Uh, no.
No?
No.
So, see, okay.
Arkansasite is not like a Commission on Environment, a...
It is currently, but under the current process, this is kind of an informal meeting that we have with applicants to give them guidance, and we might consult with architects and specialists to help us in that process. But it wouldn't be a public meeting where we'd want project proponents or advocates to come and tell us what they like or don't like about a project.
Once the Arkansasite makes a recommendation, it would go to the Planning Commission, and at that, at that level, then the public could weigh in at that meeting. So, the public's not precluded from that.
Well, yeah, I understand that. So, my point is that if there is public concern about a particular project, this is a means, and it has been a means for some time, for the public to find out about the characteristics of the project, rather than waiting before it actually comes before city planning. So, sometimes things of controversy, you don't want to find out it, about it too late in the process. You want to find out about it earlier in the process so that you could prepare for the arguments, you could prepare for whatever it is that you and maybe your neighbors would like to affect. So, this basically is taking that mechanism out of the public's hands.
It's just altering the timing, not the, it's not taking anything out of their hands, it's just altering the timing.
Well, from my perspective, as a member of the public, I like a provision so that if there are interested parties, they have a chance to observe. So, maybe not participate, but to observe, because I think it's important for us, and we've had this tradition, and to cut it off to make things streamlined, sort of goes against my sense of having an option for transparency on the public side.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion that public have the option to observe the meeting, not necessarily participate.
Yeah, the motion is the public would be invited to that meeting.
Right, okay.
An Arkansasite meeting that was closed to the public.
This is a change.
Yeah, again, Arkansasite Committee would go away.
I have a problem with that.
There would be a Design Review Process, you know, again, internal staff, it's consultants and the applicant, give them design advice and recommendations, which is really what Arkansasite does, but nobody seems to understand that. They think that they make decisions, that it's appealable, and nobody ever shows up unless it's highly controversial, and we generally hear from those people. The one suggestion I would make is if the city council prefers to have a public process, that we retain a committee. I, I think it's very awkward to invite members of the public to meetings with applicants. I don't think that would have a good result.
I think, the others, hang on a second. You have a motion on the floor, I haven't got a second, I guess, I just wanted to... The motion was to allow the public to attend these meetings. Mr. City Manager, you want to weigh in on this?
Let's wait for the motion.
Okay, is there a second on that motion?
Okay, I'd like to further explain.
Hang on, let me see if the City Manager, because that motion failed, so...
It did.
Is there something you wanted to add at this point, for clarity?
No, I don't think so. I mean, if we were going to go back the way we were, I think that the motion, the point...
Yeah, the motion was made, there was not a second, so that motion failed.
Okay. So, I'm not saying the city planning to go back to the way we are, were, or are at this point. And I totally agree that in many cases, the public may not understand how Arkansasite is meant to function. Now, I don't know where the fault of that is. I, I think that should be explained if there's public involved. If public involve themselves in Arkansasite, there's clearly an interest to be involved in this decision-making process. Either the project is controversial for whatever reason, maybe they don't understand the project, I don't know which. But the public is concerned about it. To cut that off at this point, I, I just can't go along with that. We need to come up with some way at an early stage, and this is the early stage, where the public could understand what the project is. And we've had recent proj, we've had a very recent project, because there wasn't that kind of communication between the proponents of the project and those who did not like the project. If that communication happens at an earlier time, I think things actually would work smoother. So, to cut something off that Capitol has had a tradition of, the tradition involving the public in an early stage, I think is not the way to go.
Okay. I, I still stand for the position that this project, whatever it is, as soon as the Arkansasite meets, it goes to the Planning Commission. At that point, the public is included in this, like many decisions are made in the Planning Commission, the public's made aware of. So, we've had a motion, there was no second, so we're going to move on to the next item. Next item?
Okay.
So, is that, that, what it does, we went back on the section that we already approved, so now we can close out this section like we did prior to that, and that takes us back to 17 dash 112, is that correct?
17 dash 112, so permit application and review. This outlines exactly what the process is when you come into City Hall for a planning application. It outlines that there's a pre-application conference that's available for prospective applicants, goes through application fees, how the application review works. One change that the Planning Commission made was to include a flow chart so that visually an applicant could come in and see exactly how the process works. It outlines if you have a multiple applications with the processes, that they be reviewed Goes through the project evaluation and staff reports, environmental review, and then when an application is deemed withdrawn, so...
Any comments on this section? Go ahead, Jacque.
I have a question, page 1123. So, at the top of the page, number four, it says, "Failure by city staff to identify all permit requirements shall not constitute a waiver of those requirements." So, suppose when city staff overlooks, for some reason, who knows what, a permit requirement, and then the project starts, what happens in this case? You know, the burden is on the applicant, and they have to recover something they may have lost in time and maybe expense? What happens?
So, I think what this is intended to do is, say, staff is reviewing an application, they identify a design permit's necessary, we get it prepared for hearing, and at the last minute, maybe we identify a setback encroachment and needed a variance. We could still require that they obtain a variance through the Planning Commission. It wouldn't be, since we missed it, it's gone, and there are some agencies in California that have a policy like that. If, you know, you can't have a second bite of the applicant, you miss it, it's gone, you can't require it, contrary to state law, I might mention. So, that's all it is. Typically, when those things do happen, we'll refund an applicant, we won't charge them for the additional time to try to, you know, alleviate some of the hardship that we'd created.
Is that codified, then?
It's not.
Then I would like to have that, something be inserted in here?
I would, you know, when it comes to refunds, I would highly, strongly recommend we stay away from that, because, you know, you often get disputes with applicants over what is a late hit, what's not. They might submit a new project, change the project, and a new issue arises, which to them is, it's a new comment from staff, but it, from our perspective, is initiated by a change in the project.
Like, I could see if they made a change, you know, something happened that changed the very nature of it, and maybe even in a minor way, and, you know, that would mean perhaps that city staff didn't, didn't see the necessity for that permit. But my issue is that if, I'm not saying there's any fault here, but I don't want to put the onus on the applicant if city, city planning missed something, and, and that's my problem here. And so, with this number four here, that, that gives me some concern. And I...
You know, I think just as easily, we could strike that statement altogether, because that's how state law works. And there's plenty of case law to back it up, that just because a staff person makes a mistake, it doesn't entitle a property owner to some development privilege.
Okay, then I move that we strike number four on page 112 dash three at the top of the page. It's my motion. And the reason why I argue...
112 dash three, number four?
Yeah, on the top.
112 dash three, top of the page, item number four.
Yeah.
You're saying that this statement is consistent with state law?
I might, I might look back to our city attorney to make sure I'm not stepping in it, but I do know that there's lots of case law, this has been, you know, property owners have challenged city decisions on, you know, missing a permit requirement, and have tried to say, well, we don't need to do it because the city missed it, and the courts, I think, have consistently held that that is, it doesn't obviate them from complying.
And it should also be noted that it's under the pre-application review, so a formal submittal has not been made at the time when, this is just during your pre-application review, and you're outlining what you should be bringing in, so it's...
If something's required, it's required. I, I support this thing, but we'll have it from the city attorney, go ahead.
Sorry. I'm trying to find the line.
That's okay.
Yes, the statement on page 112 at the top, item four, is an accurate reflection of state law. If a representation is made by city staff that happens to be incorrect with regard to the requirements for issuance of a permit, in general, the city's not bound by that.
Right. I would be more concerned about the residents that are neighbors by, if something happens, that if something was overlooked and we corrected it, it would benefit people that we adhere to the law, even if we overlooked it by mistake, so... You got a motion? Is there a second on that motion?
I'll withdraw.
Okay. Then we're going to draw, then are you okay with this section?
I, I do have a problem with this, because it could...
Well, you said you were going to withdraw that.
No, I don't think I'm going to get a second, but I just...
So, are we okay with this section?
Yes, yes.
Anybody else have a problem with this section? We're moving on to the next section.
Okay, so now conceptual review, this is new. We've had a process for conceptual review, but now we've outlined exactly what that process is and codified it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I made a mistake. So, on page...
Hold on, we're going to go back. Where, where you at?
My mistake. 112 dash five.
Okay.
Yeah. So, on the bottom of the page, number A, excuse me, letter A.
Yes.
So...
Response required?
Yeah, response required, yeah. So, we have to do this, the response has to be done within nine months. So, I was wondering, can we reduce that? Is there a reason for nine months?
I don't think there's anything magic about the nine-month number. Six months might be a little bit short. You could have somebody that runs into financial problems and needs more time to finish an application. We're trying to acknowledge those situations without allowing them to park a project in its City Hall for five years and then complain about how much time it's taken to process.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering about, like, holding up projects and stuff, okay.
So, we're good?
Yes.
Moving forward.
Conceptual review.
Got it.
So, this is codifying the process of conceptual review, and that there's two, you can either go just before Planning Commission, or within conceptual review, you can request to go before Planning Commission and City Council. Talks about just what the submittal requirements are, what the application review entails. It's pretty open, depending on the project.
Any problems with this section?
B two?
B two, go ahead.
114 dash one. So, it's talking about the Planning Commission shall provide input on the conceptual review application. The City Council may also provide input. So, how is that affected? How, how is that procedure carried out, such that you're appealing to the city planning and City Council almost at the same time?
On applicant's request.
Yeah, it's just...
Upon applicant's request.
So, okay, right. So, the applicant would go to both bodies, is that how it works?
It can. So, in the example of the recent conceptual reviews that you've had, 38th Avenue, that 11 lot subdivision, a subdivision would go before the City Council regardless.
Good example, yeah.
So, at that point, we, we suggest you go before Planning Commission and City Council. For a, more of a minor project, such as, say, someone's looking at a site in the community commercial, and they're not quite sure if they should put parking on the side or in the rear, they might just go to Planning Commission to have them look at a couple of site options. And there, there's actually a design across the street that was a conceptual review by Planning Commission only.
Yeah. The 38th is a good example, which I forgot about. Thank you.
Are we good with that section?
Yep, yep, yep.
Moving on, 17 116.
Oh, one more problem. I'm sorry. Okay. 114 dash two, shouldn't that be direct, what director are we referring to at the bottom of the page? Permit Streaming Act, third line, unless and until the director is that our Community Development Director? Okay, so change that to Community Development Director.
Okay, are we good?
Yep.
Moving on, Katie. You made that change, Community Development Director?
Yes, got it.
71116.
Okay, 7, 17 116, administrative permits. We've had talk of administrative permits throughout. Some examples of administrative permits are home occupations and fence permits. Also, this evening, when we talked about administrative permits for, in that, the temporary uses such as the sidewalk sales that was mentioned. What would occur with an administrative permit is the Community Development Director would make a decision. There would be no public noticing or hearing, so that's typical for our home occupation and fences currently. There would be an avenue to appeal, and the appeal would go to the Planning Commission.
Okay, we good there? We're good. Design permits.
Okay. Design permits. So, design permits, this is the chapter which tells you when a design permit either has to be, is an administrative design permit, or goes before Planning Commission. A minor design permit would have noticing attached to it. Let's see, I've got some. So, a minor design permit goes, is a decision that's made by the Community Development Director. There is public notice, so property owners within 300 feet are noticed for a minor design permit. And then a meeting would be called only if we received a request from a neighbor or an affected party. A design permit is Planning Commission review, public noticing is required, and there is a public hearing with the Planning Commission. So, within table 17.120 dash one, on page 120 dash two, you can see the Planning Commission red lines, and I've taken each section and placed it within a slide. So, the first section we'll talk about is the single-family residential projects, and this outlines when a minor design permit is necessary and when a design permit is necessary. One item I did notice in putting this together that we don't have in this table that needs to be added is the secondary dwelling units, because it's, my understanding, we were going to do a minor design permit for the secondary dwelling units, so that there would be notice within a certain radius from those. For certain. We'll, we'll go back to our secondary chapter with the direction that you gave us during the review and add it appropriately to this table. But any modifications for single-family residential? Or discussion or questions?
Couldn't the first one, the minor design permit, be where the addition is not visible from the public street?
Yeah, so a ground-floor addition to an existing single-family home where the addition is visible from a public street and does not exceed 15 feet in height, except for exempt additions.
I don't understand what makes it minor. If it's visible, it seems like it should be minor if it, you can't see it from the street. Yeah, I'm just trying to understand the logic.
Oh, Katie, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong on this, but currently, any, any alterations which are visible require Planning Commission approval of a design permit. And I've seen a number of very minor alterations, like awnings, closing in a, you know, a front deck, and things that really don't change the nature of the house that I think were always un... were always uneasy, telling an applicant they need to give us a couple thousand dollars for a Planning Commission approval. And the Planning Commission looked at that and thought, yeah, those types of minor changes should be done over the counter with a provision for an appeal.
But this doesn't really speak to those kind of changes, because I could be adding 250 feet of square foot area to a house and meet these requirements. Could I not?
So, um, another point to add is that if it's, if it's not visible, it doesn't require a design permit at all, as long as it's on the first story.
Right.
So it's when it's on the front of the home, and less than 15 feet in height, we would notice, notice would go out with a minor design permit. So, um, there'd be a 10-day noticing period in which any one in the neighborhood could come in and ask for this to be reviewed, uh, within a hearing, but they would be allowed to-
I understand the height, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get some kind of a, uh, my arms around the magnitude.
250 square feet.
No, I mean, you could do 500 square feet. You could-
As long as-
So it's overs, great.
If it doesn't exceed 15 feet, you could double the size of the house by this rationale, or by this explanation, I should say.
That's correct. It would, if it's on the first story, and it's less than 15 feet in height, you could, there's no maximum size limitation to this.
Should there be, or should we leave it alone?
You would think.
So-
I don't know.
I, I think what's too helpful to understand is this is a tier-two permit. The tier-one is the minor additions, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're not visible from the street, and they're less than some threshold, and that's administratively issued, right?
So that would, exactly. So the tier-one is it's not visible from the street, it's off the rear of the home, and it's a first story, and it's not even listed in the table, because it's administrative.
Right.
This is the tier-two, which is the minor design, and then the tier-three would be the design permit by Planning Commission.
I'm just wondering whether the same, unless anybody, nobody else feels that way-
Well, let's see, Dennis, you have a comment on this?
What do you think, Dennis?
Are you on this topic, or something else?
Yeah, I'm, I'm there. Um, on the ground floor additions, uh, 15% of total floor area are more than existing multi-family structures. Is that, is it, is this only applying to multifamily, or they fall, they fall, they-
This is, uh, the slide I have on right now is just for the single-family residential, so for the first six items.
When, when you use a percentage, it's really not fair to a person that has a small house. You, 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 uh, when you, when you use a square footage, then it's fair to everybody. So it should be a square footage figure, not, not using a percentage of, of expansion. Because many, especially if you have, if you have a 400-square-foot house, and you have 15%.
This isn't even talking about percentage, it's just like anything goes on the first floor.
15 feet, 15 feet in height, here below 15 feet in height.
I agree with that, I think.
No, you have additions-
Below than 15 feet, feet in height. I'm looking at the chart here, is where I'm going with it right here.
Is it the first item on the chart?
The Planning Commission recommendation is, is to change it, change these from, from a square footage figure to a percentage, uh-
That, that's under multifamily, but for now, we're on single-family.
This is under single-family.
This is a single family.
So, single-family, as long as you meet setbacks, and floor area ratio, and you're under the 15-foot height, we would notice this as a minor design permit.
What was Michael's point, White, that you could double the size, and you wouldn't need a permit? And I wonder if that's our intent.
It's okay.
Go ahead, Ben. Ben, you, all night, I haven't heard you, Ben, go ahead. Pearl of wisdom.
That's my movement.
Yeah.
So just to repeat, I think what the city manager was saying previously, is that it would require a permit. It would be something that would be, um, noticed, and reviewed, um, and approved by the Community Development Director, unless a member of the public, or the director, him or herself, decided that it warranted going up to the Planning Commission.
I got it.
And so I think that there was the, the desire by the Planning Commission, and also something that came out of our public meetings, that to streamline the process where appropriate, let the director make decisions on less controversial projects, so the Planning Commission has more time to focus on the important things.
If it's simple, we'll do it simple. If it comes in and it is actually doubling the size, he would kick it down, he would not accept it, and say this needs to go-
He would, he would have that discussion.
Okay.
When you look at accessory structures, we already by state law have to allow, allow that.
It's, it's still a minor design. This is a way to, to not charge a lot of money for something simple. If it becomes complicated, then it goes to the full process, and that's built into this.
Yeah, and if there's one person in the neighborhood that opposes it, we have a public hearing.
There you go. So are we, are we okay now with that? Okay. Um, anything else in this section? Point once.
Good.
Okay, we're good. Are we good? Job? Good. On to 17.124. Is that correct?
Sure. Unless you wanted to hit more points in that table.
Are you worried about, no, more on the table with multifamilies? Are there any other questions, multifamily? I asked if there was other questions.
No, that's fine. No, I'm, I'm really okay with the case of multifamily, but again, um, projects by scale, when you're using a percentage, really is not fair to a smaller, smaller project.
Well, I'd say it's not for the single-family, so that's-
Yeah, so I, that-
You can live with that.
It was commercial, otherwise it probably should go, probably to the Planning Commission anyway, so.
One thing in that table, under other projects, that speaks to wireless, so we'll be, when we get to the wireless chapter, we'll have to update the other.
Okay. So with that, we can move to, uh, use permits?
Yes.
Are you okay? Use permits?
So use permits, these are your-
What number, yeah?
17.124. Page 124.1.
Oh, no. You're jumping faster than I thought. So I'm, uh, page 120-4.
Okay, now we're going back.
Sorry, you jumped further than I thought.
I just did the section, that's all I did.
Yeah, then, I didn't catch it, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, 120-4, what's your question?
At the bottom, number B.
B.
Yeah, so design review criteria, when we're talking about neighborhood compatibility, so it reads, "The project is designed to respect and complement adjacent properties. The project height, massing, and intensity is compatible with the scale of nearby buildings." Um, I was also thinking about use-compatible, not saying use being the same, but use-compatible. So you have a church, and you decide to build a skating rink next to it, or, you know, something of that sort. So you have a, a residential neighborhood, and someone does, uh, decides to put in, I don't know, skateboard park, or something of that sort, not that that ever occurs, but, you know, have an issue, have a mention in here about compatibility of use.
So that's, that's, uh, provided in the use permit chapter, so-
So it wouldn't be provided here?
For our ones own, there's very limited uses outside a single-family residential, um, things like a church, a skate park, those require a conditional use permit. And then you do have to make a finding that the use characteristics are compatible with the surrounding neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
So we're okay?
Yep.
With the entire section?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Which brings us to use permits.
Use permits, thank you.
So 17.124. I do not have multiple slides for this, um, and it, it just reviews what a minor use permit, with the, um, review process for minor use permit versus a conditional use permit, and the public noticing.
I don't see any changes from the Planning Commission, so. Are we okay with the use permit section?
Hmm, yep.
Dennis?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good with use permit, variances.
Variances is, uh, really set within the state law of what you can write within a variance section of your code-
Okay.
-for your review criteria, so-
Question?
Yes.
How's that? I, I, that, that's interesting to me.
Um, I think to create a fair process for variances, and to assure-
So basically addressing the process, and, and, okay, is that what you're saying?
And, and the criteria as well, for review.
Yeah, okay. So we're standard across the state?
Mm-hmm.
Cool. Can I say no corrections here?
Correct. There's a section of state law that addresses how variances are able to proceed, and this chapter basically mirrors state law.
I love it.
So that means you're okay?
Yeah.
We accept state law.
Thank you.
We accept state law.
No, it's, uh, uniformity of-
Sign permits.
Sign permits. This explains exactly what the process is. For sign permits, you'll see, under page 132-2, we took out some foo-foo language of, if the property is located within or near a residential area, the proposed sign is harmonious with the character of the residential neighborhood. They didn't want to review that as part of the sign application, so they took that out.
Is, is that a technical term?
Foo-foo, yes.
It is, okay, I just-
Evidently applying to-
I mean, I did go to school in this area.
It's from state law.
It is from-
Very good.
Any, uh, any questions in that?
No.
Sign? We're okay, on to minor modifications.
Okay, minor modifications. This is new. Um, this, we, we've run into a lot of applications in which a variance isn't quite warranted for an application, such as, uh, a parking space that's off by a foot, and it's, it's hard to say that they couldn't actually move the home and get the 20 feet that they're required to have, but we have no tool other than a variance in which to support a minor modification. So this, um, allows that 10% deviation from a standard, and it, it, it explains exactly what standards can be reviewed, and then the, what cannot be, such as, um, excluded modifications for maximum height of buildings, fences, walls, and other structures. Minimum or maximum setbacks from property lines cannot be altered, lot area width or depth. So really, the, um, if you, if you want to change in the height, you have to go for a variance, you can't utilize that under here, but-
I must speak for the council member who's not here, and is ill, and say something that I know she would bring up, that I'd like to strike from this, and that is minimum required onsite open space in landscaping. There's no reason that it should deviate.
You are absolutely right, and she would bring that up.
Oh, to, to allow a 10% reduction?
Yeah.
I think you spoke well.
Yeah, she would definitely bring that up.
You're welcome, Stephanie. I know you're watching. So would you like to, uh, delete that section, or-
I would move it that-
Or reinclude that?
That one be deleted. Set down.
We would move it down to one B. B1.
Uh, correct, correct. I would say that's good. I think this is a, I think this is a good clause and provision, especially given our, our challenging properties, but that 20 is, uh-
We're never known as-
Yeah, I, I think this is something that, that staff advocated for, because what, what I've observed, um, in many cases, is we have an applicant that has sort of a different feature on their property, something that warrants consideration of a reduced development standard, but it doesn't meet state variance findings.
Sure.
So this would allow an outlet to make a very minor reduction, um, you know, in parking. You know, I would suggest adding setbacks to it, because setbacks tend to be the most common variance requests we see, and variances, you know, strictly defined, can only be granted when there's something highly unusual about the lot, its size, shape, topography, which generally, you know, those findings are difficult to make. Um, Planning Commission didn't want to go there, I respect their direction, but I would point out, this would offer, you know, if you had a five-foot setback requirement, you could get a half-foot reduction. Not a lot, but it, it is a tool that could be used in those applicable situations.
We have a significant number of older houses and historic houses also that apply to this, where it, if, it often can't be designed or built without use of the existing, uh, geography, and also the existing setbacks, so having an avenue to allow for variance in situations with historic houses is a good, good avenue to have.
And we did build, uh, some exceptions in for historic residences, so they could deviate from setbacks, height, and other exclusions, you know, outside of a variance in this minor modification.
We're fortunate enough in this town that most of our lots are square. Right.
So you want to add two, two back up to A? Is that, is what you're-
I would just encourage the council to give it some consideration.
Is there a feeling on that?
Yeah. I'm good with that.
So two would go back to A, and the, the landscaping is, um, who does that, that goes to B? Okay, got those changes? Are we good with that?
Yes.
Okay, moving on.
Okay, next is reasonable accommodations. Again, this is from state law, so it's a reflection of state law. Any edits?
Okay, hold on a second, hold on a second, are we-
This is 140-1.
Okay, I gotta get past the coastal commission. Okay, reasonable accommodations, go ahead.
This is a reflection of state law.
Okay, so, again, being consistent?
Mm-hmm.
We're okay there? So we accept that?
I think you would say something about it, but we can't.
Zoning code amendments. 144-2.
Zoning code amendments. This outlines exactly what the process is, if one were, if a property owner were to come in and ask for a zoning code amendment.
Okay.
Code, it's okay.
I don't see any changes from planning. Are we okay with that one? Public notice and hearing.
Um, public notice and hearing outlines exactly what is required in terms of public notice and hearings for the different types of permits that are outlined within the code. And it's hopefully a great improvement to our existing code, and is a place that the public can come to and see exactly, um, for their type of application, what the noticing requirement is. And the noticing ties back typically to state law, so a variance, a CUP, those have to be noticed, um, publicly, noticing in a newspaper, all of that is outlined here.
Was this a lively discussion in Planning Commission?
You know, it was more of a lively discussion with staff, and working with Linda Friday, and who applies this all the time, and she, a lot of the edits you see are actually her work that she suggested to the Planning Commission, so.
Comment. Is it, is it worthwhile to include in here, so that especially new council members understand it, the recent litigation that took place, and the fact that if a council member appeals a project, they can then not sit on the panel that reviews it? It's, it's something that-
It's appeals.
Raised a lot of eyebrows, but I believe that that's the case now, and perhaps we would do well to include it, so council people know, if they personally appeal something, they will not be sitting up here talking about it. Because it, it, um, entones a bias when they appeal it.
So we did have some discussions about that, uh, several months ago, with our issues and options, and, uh, with the Planning Commission subsequently to that. And that section resides in a different section of our municipal code, I think it's chapter two that talks about appeals and processes. Um, so my suggestion there is, if we want to make that change, that we do it in chapter two.
Is it appropriate here, or should we just leave it in, in municipal code and leave it out of the zoning? I don't know.
You mean like something C, C, C-section, or, or necessary, or redundant?
You know, I think if we put it here, we still would have to, um, revise chapter two to make sure that they're consistent, so on that basis, I would suggest just dealing with it in chapter two, if that's what we want to do.
Okay, are you okay?
I just needed to bring that up.
It exists, and it, and it, and it will be addressed.
Does that also apply if a council member brings back an issue to a council?
What do you mean, brings back an issue?
Let's say, let's say that you voted, you, you voted, um-
You mean a reconsideration of a?
A reconsideration. When you bring it back, does that apply there too?
Does the reconsideration of a vote by someone who was on the winning side, that has to happen at the same meeting, does it not?
We're going to hear.
We got Tony up here. Must be important.
I would not interpret that, the rule concerning a council member who files an appeal to apply to a council member who brings a motion for reconsideration because that's pretty much a standard provision of parliamentary procedure and an accepted procedure for council members.
But is it true reconsideration needs to happen at the meeting that the vote was taken, does it not?
I believe that's correct or the next meeting.
Like is the next, did that happen last?
It happened within the past year and we interpreted.
That's always been a point of confusion for me. It's.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think what we, I think the way we interpret it is that the council had to specifically, affirmatively vote to override the standard rule.
Got it. Okay, good enough. Does that mean?
I'm confused to where this does apply then. Explain to me.
I have made a note to myself as you were speaking to just review that case law and to provide an update to the council on that issue because I frankly, I recall it coming up several months ago and I don't recall how it.
It was an appeal, our planning commission decision?
Yeah, it was a reported appellate decision that came out and.
Correct.
We sent out an alert, but I need to go back and refresh my recollection.
Right. Well, since that's in chapter two, if you could just get back to us on that and let us know how that, how that applies.
I'm, I'm a little confused on this, Tony, and I'll tell you why. It's, it's almost, it's a constitutional right in, in, in public hearings to, or for a, a city council member to draw it back. For that city council member not to hear it or participate in it, that, that discourages anyone from ever appealing anything.
Exactly. And it, the idea is, I think, what the courtroom was.
Principle was.
That they, they want to, they are considering overturning the planning commission, which, like I said, indicates a bias, which means they can, they have the constitutional right to appeal anything. They just can't commit to the decision makers after they exercise that right.
And it really has, and it's competing constitutional interests because against the council member's right to their own political expression and to call up a decision is the applicant's right to due process, which also implies an unbiased body of decision makers who don't have a pre-existing, who haven't pre-decided an issue before they've considered the evidence that's in front of them. So, so that's a due process issue on the other side of that.
What if, what if a council member stated before the planning commission decision that they were going, they were going to appeal it to the council?
That they would appeal it to the council?
That they were going to appeal it to the council.
I don't think that the case that came out addressed that issue specifically, but I could imagine someone raising that as an issue of, of fairness in a hearing and it goes to inherent bias. I'm not aware of a case that addresses that particular fact pattern that, that would lead me to believe that that would somehow disqualify the council member from, from ultimately deciding the issue. Again, I'd like to refresh my recollection and I'm happy.
I'd like you more because I think this is real deterrent from using the appeal process.
Well, I, I think you're absolutely right. It's, it's, but I also think.
It was meant to.
But I also think, as I recall, it was, in that particular case, there was a provision of that city's municipal code that played into the analysis. So, I just want to make sure that I compare apples to apples and provide you with a, a, a well-thought-out opinion.
I'd like you to come back with accurate information and we can weigh in on it again.
Thank you, Tony.
We're not, we're not done with it, Dennis. We'll, we'll, we'll hear. Takes us to?
Appeals, seventeen point one-five-two. Explains how to file and process an appeal, how it gets scheduled for a hearing, the decision, and the effective date of the decision.
Any questions here? Question for you, Katie. It's nine thirty. Where are we heading with this? Where, are we, are we at a point that we're trying to get to or what's your?
Well, I, I just, if we could get through this section, part four, we've just missed more sections.
Okay.
I don't know, and then I'll ask whether or not you have any changes to the glossary. But otherwise, and then I can run you through exactly what the next steps are. We're very close right now, so I'd hate to stop now.
No, I wasn't. I just wanted to see what your plan was. What's the will of the, we, we have a little bit of energy left?
Let's get it done.
Okay.
If we can get through this part four and then if there's feedback on the glossary, we're, we're, we're in a really good place. That'd be great.
Let's try to get to a really good place.
Okay, so, appeals. Any concern with appeals?
There are none appeals. No comments, we're fine.
Okay, next chapter is one-five-six for post-decision procedures. This outlines what happens after you, a decision's been made.
I don't see much read. Any questions on post-decisions? Chuck? None? We're okay with that section?
Okay, so that, that's it. Next, I don't have slides for the glossary, but are there any terms that you'd like to discuss or have us bring back or edit?
Yeah, I do have one.
Chuck, anything in the glossary?
You know, I haven't read the glossary.
Okay. We got too far ahead of you.
Yes, you did. I wasn't ready.
You exceeded our expectation, or we exceeded our own expectation.
I, I thought I would be prepared, but did not get to the glossary.
Michael, anything on the glossary?
I haven't even looked at the glossary. I didn't even know we were going to review it.
I just like the way you put it. There's N terms and O terms and.
I think, I think there's.
The way you detail it.
I think there's a consensus here that they'd like to scan the glossary for the next session.
Okay.
Okay, if we can do that.
My book doesn't contain a glossary.
Oh.
So, maybe you can push that over to me.
So, why don't we, why don't we just say that we're going to all take another look at the glossary and come back with any questions?
Chuck, I have one term to send you away with. The decision, this, in the, in the, in the decision, the word may.
Yeah, we've changed that a couple of times.
May is permissive.
We'll do permissive, I bet, or we can.
Shall.
In the interpretation?
Okay, so we're all going to take another look at the glossary and, and see if there's any changes. Kate, anything else?
I was just going to give you an overview of like what the next steps are.
I think an overview would be good. That way we can all prepare even better than we did today.
Okay, so, we'll be back. We'll be back with wireless in the near future.
Okay.
And we'll also be back with the glossary and a zoning map at this point. So.
Okay.
But I want to talk about the, so, once, we've gotten great feedback from you and are very appreciative of all your time. And what we're going to do is take all these red lines that you, we're going to take the planning commission document with the red lines that you've reviewed. We're going to accept their changes so it'll become a clean document of what the planning commission changes were. And then we're going to publish that on the website, probably in December. And we'll also publish a second copy that will have that document with the city council's red lines overlaid on it. So, it'll, you'll see all of your red lines. And with each packet, you've been getting updated tables that outline every change you've told us to make. So, you can take that table, you can check it against the new red lines and make sure we got it correct. So, that, that will go out this December. We'll have that on the, online. The, in January, we plan to have a planning commission and city council zoning code status update. So, we'll meet, we'll have, we'll go to a regular meeting with the planning commission and get feedback on what we've posted online and how we want to then move forward because there'll be a couple new planning commissioners or one new planning commissioner or two. And from there, we'll also meet with the city council and get feedback from the city council on how they'd like to proceed. And the big step in this that we've heard from the public is to get this document out for public review and for a substantial amount of time. So, once we have both documents up on the website, we'll make sure that those documents are available at the library, at city hall, and also on the web for a period of at least thirty days before we jump back into special hearings with the planning commission. So, the planning commission will review the final city council edits and they'll make a final recommendation. And then that recommendation will come back before a city council for a final review and then a final adoption. And then from there, we'll move forward with the, going before the council commission, so.
Question, Chuck, go ahead.
So, all our changes keep getting sent to the coastal commission for some feedback or how's that?
No, we're holding off on sending more changes to the coastal commission until we have a final document that reflects exactly what the city of Capitola would like submitted. So, what we had shown earlier tonight were the, the minor edits. We will get those back before planning commission and hopefully, and before the city council to incorporate into this, the published document.
Michael, I'd like to request to change the thirty-day public review to sixty.
Second.
Yeah, I, you know, I think the other thing I would add is that January meeting, we're also going to be seeking direction from both the planning commission and council. What, where do you want us to go from here? There's going to be at least one new member on each body, perhaps two. It's possible that maybe there are some sections that the council or commission wants to re-review and discuss again with the new members.
Well, that council can change it, but I think this council should make an effort to have a longer public review process.
Any other discussion? Motion and second for sixty days. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry unanimously. I got one other thing before I adjourn here. There's a note on here to additions, deletions. Continue this item to the end of the meeting. Is this?
That was a holdover from the last meeting.
So, it's okay. Okay, then I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.